We're going to call the meeting to order. Roll call, Jerry. Everyone's here that's supposed to be here today, except for those who said they were out. So Marsh is out and Kathy's out. We have an extra commissioner today. Actually, who else is out?
Jim.
Oh, and Jim.
You got three people out.
We have three people out, because I was like, Jim's not on my list.
No, of course not.
I was like, we have an extra commissioner today, so say again. Oh. All right, for those in the audience today, if you don't have an agenda, you can pick one up in the back bookshelf, so you can follow along with all the items that are on our agenda today. Approval of the February 25, 2019 minutes. Did anyone get a chance to review those? Are there any edits, corrections? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I have a comment.
Okay.
It shows I seconded or I made a motion, but it wasn't there.
Which item?
Item number... Are you talking about the minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Item number two.
For...
Of the agenda.
Do we have her? She said she didn't.
Well, I wasn't at the meeting.
Wasn't at the meeting. Yeah, she wasn't at the meeting, so...
So I couldn't have made a motion. Unless I'm reading this wrong.
We'll get it fixed.
We'll figure out what it is, and then at the next meeting, we can make the corrections.
Yeah, no, no big deal, but I guess...
Move to approve with corrections.
Move to approve with corrections by Mark DeSanto. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Approval of today's agenda. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. PJ, our consent agenda.
Good morning, PJ Conover, Director of Planning Department Consent Agenda. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in a single vote with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of the planning commissioner, recommendations to the Paints County Board of Commissioners will make the final decisions. Item three, conditional use permit review, 1003, for Michael Howell to review a dog cat boarding kennel in a limited agriculture district. Staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit, 1003, with 11 conditions. Item four, conditional use permit review, 1601, for Daniel Elliott to review living in an existing cabin while building a new single-family residence on the subject property in the general agriculture district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit, 1601, to the April 8, 2019 Planning Commission meeting with one condition. Item five, conditional use permit review, 1641, for Robert and Glenda Frank to review a recreational vehicle to be used as temporary living quarters while building a single-family residence on the subject property in a limited agri... I'm sorry, in a low-density residential district. Staff recommends to continue the review of conditional use permit, 1641, to the May 13, 2019 Planning Commission meeting with one condition. Item six, Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment Review, 1405, for Joni Peterson to review the existing trailhead plan unit development to allow for a home occupation, a salon business in the basement of the residence. Staff recommends approval of the extension of Minor Plan Unit Development Amendment, 1405, with eight conditions. Item seven, construction permit, 1903, for Mike and Kimberly Van Loem to level and grade a road to be utilized as a driveway for further construction of a single-family residence. Staff recommends approval of construction permit, 1903, with 10 conditions. Item eight, construction permit review, 1902, for Site Work Specialists Incorporated to review constructing a gravel access road to and onto the subject property to include a minimal tree removal, grading, gravel seeding, and culverts, and to add a common utility transfer power and communications. Staff recommends approval of the extension of construction permit, 1902, with 13 conditions. Item nine, Plan Unit Develop... I'm sorry. Minor Platte, MPL, 1903, for Sam Fisher, Fiscland surveying as the agent, to combine two lots to create Lot 1 of RTHV subdivision. Staff recommends approval of Minor Platte, MPL 1903, with four conditions.
Any items, staff, would like to pull from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Any items for the membership? Any members of the audience, if you'd like any item from item three through nine to be considered separately, please come forward and let us know, or it's going to be considered all in one vote. All right, I would entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda, items three through nine.
I so move.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. That takes us to item number 10.
Hi, good morning. Christina Perretti here, Planner One. I'm going over item number 10, it's Conditional Use Permit, 1902, to allow for a vacation home rental on the subject property in a suburban residential district. And the applicants are here, Mr. and Mrs. Anderson are in the audience. The lot is currently zoned as suburban residential with a total of 1.43 acres, and access is gained from Crowell Court. The applicant, Greg, and Mr. and Mrs. Anderson are requesting a conditional use permit to allow an existing three-bedroom residential to be used as a vacation home rental on the subject property. And currently on the property, there is the single-family residence with the two decks on the side. The special flood hazard area has not been studied in that area yet. And there are no other concerns for this property, and staff is recommending approval with 15 conditions.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
Have you received any opposition to this?
Not yet.
Not yet.
No, no letters or opposition yet.
But notices were sent out to the adjacent property owners.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
Don't we have a rule on suburban residential with vacation home rentals?
We did prohibit them in suburban residential, but with the revision of the section, vacation home rentals are allowed in pretty much any zoning district, as long as it meets one acre. And then aside from that, they'd have to get a variance, and then a conditional use permit if they're less than one acre. So in suburban residential with this property, it's... They're allowed to apply for the conditional use permit.
Okay. And then the flood hazard hasn't been studied? How much flood hazard on there, ma'am?
There is no flood hazard area.
I thought you said it had flood hazard, I apologize.
It's not studied.
It doesn't mean that it won't flood, it just hasn't been studied, which is a lot of the county.
Okay, so there's no flood hazard on it, is what you're saying?
No data.
It could still flood.
I guess I'm not getting that, then.
There's areas of the county that could still be inundated with floodwaters, they just haven't been studied by an engineer to determine what the base flood elevation or what the flows would be. Floodways in the county, that's where vacation home rentals are prohibited, in floodways.
Okay, and this is flood 100-year or 500?
Not studied, so it's neither.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
I'm familiar with this property, I'm sure you are. It doesn't seem like it could be in a... It's on quite a slope, so I doubt that it's in any sort of flood zone, or floodway, or floodplain.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
What any... Oh, go ahead, Sonny.
Request for comments, Rapid City Public Works stated that there will be way more than six people sleeping there. Is there any reason why they had that comment?
I'm not sure. Would you like to comment on that, why they would think there'd be more?
Come on up, come up to the microphone, please. It's because I mentioned it to them. We have to, when spring comes, we're replacing the septic, so we'll be coming back before the board to increase from six to 10. But after we improve the septic this spring.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Any members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Okay, come on up, sir.
Is the structure pictured? Is that the structure that's going to be the vacation rental?
Yes.
I believe so. Yes, sir.
And that's the full-time vacation rental?
It'll be advertised as full-time availability for a vacation home rental.
This is in a residential area, and I'm one of the people that's within 500 feet. If you want my name, I'll give it.
Please, go ahead.
Joseph Gregory. I don't... I'm opposed to this, I don't see the point. I don't know why you would want to do that in this area.
Okay, do you have any... Anything further on that?
Nope.
Any questions for Joseph from the membership?
Sure, have... Sorry.
Go ahead.
Have you been familiar with vacation home rentals?
Yes.
Okay. And your objection is because it's too close, or what's your objection, sir?
I was a state inspector for 20 years. I inspected vacation home rentals all throughout the county and the western part of the state, and I just don't think that fits in our residential area.
I appreciate that, sir.
Okay. Any further questions from the membership, for Mr. Joseph? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Any other members of the audience like to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none. Current recommend... Oh, I didn't see your hand, sorry. Come on forward.
I'd just like to say, I don't think it says we're in the... We live right next door.
Go ahead and state your name, please.
Greg Anderson, I'm the one that's applying for the vacation rental, conditional use permit. We live at 8103 Crowell, so we are right next door to the house we're going to be renting, so if there's any issues with it, we're going to be right there.
So I do have a quick question for you. So you live right next door, but you're not going to be the property manager, somebody else is doing that, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
I think that made the difference for me, because then you're going to be watching. I have rentals, and I try to keep them as close as I can, too. So if that was just going to be a vacation home rental, and I understood the man that just came up, it makes a difference when you're right next door, because Mr. Gregory then also can come over and say, okay, you're having some issues. But I do have regular rentals, and it seems like you have more issues with those than vacation home rentals sometimes for stuff, so thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
Sir, do you have other vacation rentals, or is this your first and only, or...
This is our only one. We bought it so that eventually we can move over to that house when our kids take over our house that's next door.
I see.
We're just trying to pay for it in the meantime.
Good point, thank you.
Uh, Mark, did you have something as well?
He stole my thunder.
Oh, she did, okay.
Sorry.
Fair enough.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 11.
Just one second, sir. Item 11 is layout plat, LPL, 1904, to create lots 1 and 2 of Cosmos subdivision, and dedicated right of way through the planning process. The agent is Fiscland surveying. Don't believe that they're in the audience today. The subject property is 17.57 acres. What they're looking to do is create Lot 1 at 10.89 acres, and Lot 2 at 6.22 acres from apparent parcel, which is going to be subdivided into, again, Lot 1 and Lot 2. Lot 1 will still contain the telecommunications facility, plus all the structures, sheds, single-family residence. Lot 2 is currently vacant of any structures. It is extremely steep in topography. It does have several dedicated easements, mainly for ingress and egress up to the cell tower. So Cosmos, which is A and B, also zoned general commercial at this time, is looking to purchase Lot... propose Lot 2 from the current owners, so that they can increase the size of their parking area on their property. We have not received any letters of objection to this. They do take Forest Service access off of the highway through Forest Service Special Use Permit, PAH 588. It was just updated in 2017, expires December 31, 2033. One of the items of note that I did talk to the surveyor about was the dedication... There's one note on there that there's eight-foot minor drainage and utility easements around the interior of all lot lines. If they were to do that, and I don't believe I have a picture of it here, unfortunately, but there is a three-stall garage located right around this lot line. Due to the year that it was put in, it's legal nonconforming for setbacks, it's 6.1 feet from the property line instead of 25 feet. However, if they do plat with an eight-foot easement along that property line, that will then bring that structure into noncompliance, so they'd be creating a problem. The representative from Fiscland surveying is aware of this, and she said that she would speak to her client and see what they need to do moving forward. This was routed through the interdepartmental review. No items of concern came back. We did not hear from the Cosmos Road District or Western Wireless, who oversees the cell tower on the subject property. Black Hills Electric Corporation had no comments or concerns. US Forest Service stated they had no objection with this layout plat, and then reiterated the expiration of the Forest Service Access easement off of the interstate, expires in 2033. The Cosmos Road District utilizes Forest Special Use Permit for ingress and egress off of South Highway 16. There is also, again, this is Cosmos Road District's job to maintain this area. We don't believe that there's any subdivision regulations that they would have to do as far as the road condition, because it is a dedicated road district. And... And for purposes of this layout plat, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, as a layout plat is an informal preliminary review of the proposed subdivision for general scope and conditions which might affect the plat. And with that, staff would recommend approval of layout plat, 1904, with nine conditions.
Any questions for staff?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Chairman, sorry. So you have slatted area on there?
Slatted.
The... Is that PUD-sensitive, when it has the slatted areas on the layout plat? Or the... I'm sorry. The description of the comprehensive plan?
Oh, the current future land use?
Yep.
Yeah, it has it down as plan unit development sensitive.
Okay. And so is there bedrock in that area as well? And areas in that... PUD-sensitive was answered by the old planning director. PUD-sensitive means it's sensitive to septic areas, putting septic tanks. Or it has floodway, or something that's sensitive in that area that you need to take a better look at, is what he had told me. So in this case, I know when we approved, one of the other ones that were close by with the slatted, it's made up of bedrock. And it would be hard... It would be hard to put septic tanks and stuff in those areas. Is this the same case?
Well, if there's bedrock, there's also technology to do it. I do have to follow up on your comment. I've looked through all the staff reports that Scott Anderson and Dan Jennison wrote since 2013.
Right.
There's nothing in writing to substantiate what he told you.
Okay, but to me, that makes sense, because...
It's sensitive to something, but knowing what a PUD is, why wouldn't it be residential sensitive, or agriculture sensitive? We can't find anything in writing to support what he told you.
Well, I can tell you from what has came up from PUD-sensitive...
Yeah.
...planning director, we've had issues with sensitive issues in the areas that they put PUD-sensitive. So I think, if nothing else, it shows that, in one case, we were never told there was bedrock underneath, over by some of these areas. The holding tanks, and the one that I... There had issues, they had holding tanks, and that was PUD-sensitive. So every time that something has came up, it has to do with septic, for me, since I've been on here. But I had no idea that PUD-sensitive made that, or what was told that, so I would have took another look at percolation tests and other things in that area for that. So there might not be a definition by your standards, but I think he was trying to tell me something.
Yeah, and I agree, and I don't doubt that.
Thank you.
With the two instances that you're talking about, it is something that we could add to the wastewater ordinance, if you'd like, to take a closer look at those. However, PUD-sensitive in the county is used so broadly, not just on properties that have... that are mountainous like this, but on flat prairie land. So it doesn't hold consistent. And that's where staff struggles, because there is no defining factor for PUD-sensitive.
And there's no floodway, flood hazard in those prairie lands that you're talking about, because that's what I've seen before.
No, they're too far north.
Okay.
All right, can we get back on topic, specific to this one?
Yes, sorry. Mr. Chair.
Yes, Commissioner DeSanto.
The only concern I have is, the picture with all the snow on... Is that where they're going to expand the parking lot? That's part of the existing parking lot, and then pretty much where the trees are. We haven't seen a site plan of where they're looking to do the parking lot. Only on... All we know is that there's going to be on this property. The agent did indicate that they are looking in the future, if this goes through or through the process, to rezone this to general commercial. Okay. Or request that, at least. And you had mentioned earlier that the topography is extremely steep, so they're going to have to be doing a lot of grading, moving? I would think they would be, yeah. Is there any issue with drainage at that point in time? If we're going to add additional parking lot, that's going to create more runoff? Definitely. Yeah, less impermeable area, and then also, if they're going to go over 10,000 square feet, they'll need a construction permit as well. Yeah.
Okay. Just a quick question. I don't know if it's a picture forward or a back, the overhead view. Can you give just an idea where that parking lot expansion is expected, or where they're liking to go for that?
We do not know. They have not submitted a site plan. All I know is that they're looking to purchase it for the expansion of the existing parking lot.
But that would require additional permits and so on and so forth to build the parking lot, wouldn't it?
If they were to go over 10,000 square feet, absolutely, but we would also have the building permits, if there was any structures they put out there looked at by our drainage engineers from the highway department as well. Yep.
Thank you.
PJ, can you talk about that garage? Was it the garage that's going to be... That's currently legal nonconforming?
Yep.
How this is all going to play out? How that's going to affect with that?
So it's a three-car garage, and... Sorry, let me get the year of that one. It was built in 1979, and it's not going to affect Lot 2. It's... The three-car garage is located right here. And over here is Lot 2. Proposed Lot 2. So it's not going to affect that part of the rezone, or, sorry, the plat. What it's going to affect is if they keep the dedication of an eight-foot minor drainage utility easement around the interior of all property lines, then they're going to create a problem with that legal nonconforming structure by adding that easement. So it could be done by a subdivision regulation variance, or they could jog around that with some notes from utility companies, that'd be okay. So they have different ways that they can go about it. But through the layout plat, this is where they become... They're made aware of the issues, and then they decide what they want to do from here on.
It doesn't seem like they're going to have to knock that garage down, correct?
No. No, there's ways around it. There's no guarantee, but we wouldn't think so. There's also a structure immediately to its left, with the white roof, that is on a different property, that is also encroaching in lot lines, but not part of this request.
Okay. Any further questions for staff?
No, Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Sonny.
I don't know if this makes any difference, but when you say that the purpose of the subdivision is whatever, does that have any effect on decision-making here? Because, like with this, where are they actually going to put this parking lot question?
Mm-hmm.
If they came and said, well, actually, we're going to do something else with it, does that make any difference at all? Or is this just for general information?
This is mainly general information. This is, I mean, they could actually literally submit a plan on a napkin if they wanted to. Engineered plans and final plans basically aren't required until the next step, or further steps, depending on the type of severity of the request that they're asking for. This is just a landowner saying, here's what I want to do. We take a look at it and saying, okay, if you want to do that, here's what we see. And then it comes to the planning commission to see if you guys see anything additional that we didn't, or have any other concerns, and then also up to the board. This in no way creates either one of those lots.
So why they want to do it's pretty much irrelevant?
I...
At this point?
We usually don't know what they want to do. But the agent divulged that.
Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Go ahead, Deb.
This road is... Utilizes Forest Road Special Use District, or Special Use Permit. Are they allowed to split the lots? Or are we having them go back to the Forest Service? Because a lot of times, when I just went to a meeting, they said they didn't know when they had people adding more lots on Forest Road Special Use Permit. Do we have any authorization from them?
Yep. The Forest Service stated that they had no objection to the subdivision plat and the layout plat. Our main concern, actually, was through DOT, because there was a request also off of this road for a recreational resort, which was approved for a certain number of cabins. And if that individual was to increase the number of cabins on that property, they had to put in a turn lane. We did get comments back from DOT, which basically said they had no comment. But they will also... Both of those entities, the Forest Service and DOT, will also be routed again if this individual comes back and tries... And wants to go through the rest of the process.
Okay. That's my concern, thank you.
Any further questions for staff? Any members of the audience want to speak on behalf of this item? Seeing none. Current recommendation is to approve layout plat, PL 1904, with the following nine conditions. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you.
I'll be just be looking into this plat, only because, not that I disagree with it in one sense, I just want to look at it for more information, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item number 12.
Good morning, Kathy Bullstead, Assistant Planning Director. Item 12 is subdivision regulations variance, SV 1815, to waive plating requirements to create lots 1 through 8 of the Keystone Y subdivision. This has been continued a couple of times, Mr. Chair. Do you want me to go through everything again, or do you want me to just give the update?
Just the updates.
Okay.
I don't think anybody wants to stay here that long.
So last time this was continued at the February 25, Planning Commission meeting, there was some discussion regarding guardrails, things along those lines for what they're proposing to do. I did want to point out that on March 5, the Board of Commissioners did approve the first reading and public hearing of Rezone 1811 to rezone these subject properties from General Agriculture District to Low Density Residential District, and the board did deny their Comprehensive Plan Amendment to change the future land use. But, so on March 6, staff did receive an updated exhibit, which I'm trying to get to here. We received this updated exhibit with proposed guardrail locations from Spurlick. Both the applicant, Shane Schreiner, and representatives from Spurlick are in the audience today, but this is the update from the last Planning Commission meeting.
Any questions for staff?
Yes.
Go ahead, Sonny.
Which part of this is indicating where the guardrails would be?
The guardrails are indicated by the yellow...[1663.02] The guardrails are indicated by the yellow, so here's a guardrail right here. There's guardrails on both sides on this, and then there's guardrails. It's indicated by the yellow portions there.
And those are all on the, on the downside slope, correct?
Yes.
I don't know if I'm using the right terms. I know Rich had, you know, he had all the right terms in there, but that's a, that's a downside slope. Basically someone could go over the edge.
Yes.
Any questions? Any further questions for staff on this item?
Yes.
Go ahead, Sonny.
Go ahead, Sonny.
Question for environmental planner is regarding septic, if that has been considered, if there's anything we should know in relation to percolation tests perhaps?
Good morning, Brittany Moll, our Environmental Planning Supervisor. They are actually asking to request to waive the percolation and profile hole information. But in light of the PUD sensitive type of questions that have come up, that maybe in the future that those aren't approved to be waived, that those are done during the plating process to verify that there are areas for septic on those lots.
So the staff is looking at making that a standard moving forward, or at least considering the?
If that is something that this commission and the Board of Commissioners want us to move forward, typically we've always waived those and done them at building permit. But in those areas, if the PUD sensitive, if that's a concern, then maybe that is something that staff will look to, not recommending to waive for those types of areas.
Okay, for those specific areas.
Correct.
Go ahead, Deb.
Can Cale come up?
Cale, did you look at like the topography or the geology around that area for putting in septics and, and water?
Yeah, I do understand your concerns.
Just go ahead and state your name on there so we get you on record.
Yeah, it's Cale McNibbo. I own Spurlick Consulting. I'm the engineer of record on the project. And it's a good question with regards to the depth of bedrock creates issues sometimes with septic systems. When you have those types of issues, what we end up doing and have done successfully in the past is you have to create what's called an evapotranspiration mound. So if you've got shallow bedrock, so you don't have enough dirt separation above the bedrock, you end up essentially grading out an area, you put down what's called a rubber membrane, kind of like you have on the top of a flat building. You know, the, all these buildings have flat roofs, they have a rubber membrane that goes on top of them. You put a similar product on the bottom of the drain field, if you will. It's a big rectangular area. And you design it for evapotranspiration, which means the, the water that's being discharged into the field has to come out the top. Obviously, in the winter, you don't get a lot of evapotranspiration, so you have to size it sufficiently big that you can handle, you know, the year's production and evapotranspirate it out the top of the, the bound in the summer months. And that's how it's done. So when you have these types of issues, that's how you solve those issues with regards to septic.
How much do those systems typically run?
That I don't know. I just design them. And I don't know the overall cost of it. I suspect it's fairly expensive.
As I say, I'm familiar with at least two types, sorry. Regular one, because I had to have one put in, and mound systems. Are they more expensive than mound systems?
Yeah, they're more expensive than the mounds. You know, the mound systems are, are significantly more expensive than the conventional systems. You know, the mound obviously is, because it's got a lot of granular material that goes in the bed system of it and then the distribution lines for it. The rubber lining then, I think you could anticipate maybe it's going to be another $10,000, $15,000 of the top of the cost of the mound.
Okay, sorry, Deb. Go ahead.
Sure, okay. So with this being mining plats, have you looked at the geology for fissures or anything else on those mining plats underneath it there?
I've not looked at the, the geology of it. I know that it's a lot of rock ex, because we have been up there and driven the site. And, you know, obviously there's a lot of, there's a lot of bedrock in the area.
So number six, I think, should be taken off so you can show us, I don't know if we do, I mean, to not perform percolation test provided soil profile. Tell me how you do that without.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
That, so that kind of leads back into the.
Okay.
When, when we dig these soil profile holes at that time, so you could, you could go through and have each one of the lots drilled and it would tell you that there's a depth of bedrock issue, or you go out on a lot, you dig the soil profile holes, obviously the county's involved with that. You determine that you don't have sufficient depth of bedrock. That kicks you into doing an evapotranspiration mound. So, I mean, there's, there's opportunity to put the drain field in. What's unknown is whether that's going to be an evapo mound. And I suspect you're going to see evapo mounds.
So people would know that before they bought the lots that that, that's what was going to be put there because of the bedrock, could or could be put there because of the bedrock?
The, the problem with the three-acre lots is figuring out, since you don't know where they want to build their house and specifically where the drain field would go.
Right.
It's kind of a crapshoot to get a drill rig, if you would, out there and the slopes are fairly steep to try to get a truck in and drill a spot for a drain field when you don't know where the house is going to go or the drain field.
Okay. And I do believe when they put PUD sensitive on there, that's why. I know the planning director said that can and cannot be an issue. But I think for me, it makes a difference to look at the area because there might be something there. And in this case, the bedrock, we would have never known there was bedrock or anything until you did your tests, which is not their fault at this point either, because they wouldn't have known until those profile holes were done. And I don't know if that's fact or not, but it hasn't been built on yet. So also I've heard there's supposed to be, there will probably be holding tanks, and I've never heard of a mound, what you just talked about.
Yeah, the evapotranspiration mounds, that's, that, rather than a holding tank, I mean, nobody likes to have the, the truck come out and pump continuously.
Well, and that was my concern is that it was on bedrock and we were going to have holding tanks out there, but now that's why I brought you up, Cale, is that if there's a new system that works and it works on this type of bedrock, that's a positive.
And.
That way you can build on it still.
And that's, that's how you get around the problem with, you know, basically effluent leaching into the water system. You know, if you're in a hard rock situation where you have fissures
Right.
and you put a conventional bed on it, you can get it, you know, isolating to the fissures and going down into the drinking water. Whereas that's why you rubber line an evapotranspiration mound. So you keep any of that effluent from migrating out of the mound.
And did you guys check if it legally to put the warranty deed on this before we approved it, or you did not look into it?
The, the language from the, the Board of Commissioners meeting?
Right.
Yeah, actually, the, the owner is here and he's got an update on that if you'd like.
Thank you, sir.
All right, and I guess.
Mr. Schreiner, sir. Thank you, Cale.
Cale.
Good information. Good morning, Mr. Schreiner.
Hi, Shane Schreiner. Yeah, we had our attorney from Marley Shipper. She has, did a draft and she checked with, I, I think her name was, I don't know, Donna, somebody that does, that records those. And they, Donna who?
Meyer.
Donna Meyer. And she drafted a affidavit that, that Donna Meyer would accept and put on there. And then it's in regards to the hell of that, yeah.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And Cale, thank you for that information, because it makes a difference for me to move forward knowing that that is taken care of and what the profile hole information on a plat is besides the percolation. So now I understood why you're doing that. Thank you, sir.
Any further questions for the applicants or staff? All right, seeing none. There are two items that we're going to have to discuss here. Recommendation number one, staff recommends approval of the portion of subdivision regulations variance seven, SV 1815 to waive the following five plating requirements. And recommendation number two, staff recommends denial of the portion of subdivision regulation variance SV 1815 to waive the following one plating requirements. Well, if they've placed those guardrails on, I don't think we need to take action on item number two, because they've already placed them on there, so.
Can you explain place, it says to, to allow an exception to not install, install guardrails on number three?
So we asked them to, the last meeting, we had them, we continued it for them to come back and give us the, the guardrail spots. As you can see, the yellow markings up there. So now that those were added.
Just, just the ones graded for.
Yep.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Item number one.
Yep.
Second.
Motion and second. Any further discussion?
I would like to discuss with something.
Sure.
For a second. Was it Brittany maybe that made the comment about the percolation tests? Is this not the appropriate time to waive that requirement, or did I misunderstand?
Well, Cale had talked about that there is an option for an evapotranspiration. There's always that option. Typically, those are really large, so you need a very large lot, because they're typically a thousand square foot per bedroom. That's how large they need to be in order to build one of those. And on bedrock too, you have to bring in soils to actually put under that membrane. That's what we've seen in the past.
And it works?
The ones that, there's only three in the county right now that I'm aware of.
I just thought, I thought earlier you said that there was something about doing this during the subdivision regulation variance. If this is the right time to do it, or if it's done later?
And usually what we'll do for the, with the plating process through the subregs is waive percolation profile hole tests because they get done during the building permit process anyway.
I see, that's what you meant.
So they will not be able to build a house if there was something that was holding it up or if it was to fail.
Nice.
Right. And the other factor that, you know, it was pointed out, when you have a three-acre lot, if you don't know where the house is going to go, you have no clue where. You could go out, you'd have to dig a whole bunch of different holes if you wanted to try to get an idea of the whole piece of property, what it's going to do. So that doesn't make sense either.
So what we're saying is it can be waived now, but it will have to be waived again later?
It would be just waived now as a, as part of the process of plating. It's still going to be required at the building permit process.
Required later, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Regardless of whether they split it or not, if they bring in a building permit for residents, it's going to have to happen anyway.
All right, I understand. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Comments?
Yes.
Nope. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose no. Motion carries. Takes us to item number 13.
Well, what about recommendation number two?
They put, they had plotted the guardrails.
Oh, I see. I see. So we don't need to address that.
Correct, because we're not waiving them. They're placed.
Thank you.
Takes us item number 13.
Item 13 is ordinance amendment 1901 to amend or adopt the Penitentiary Comprehensive Plan. At the last meeting, the planning commission went through chapters one, one through three, through general comments during the meeting, but also going off of the, what I think you guys are calling it the matrix, that Matrix Design Group put together. This is kind of an update. I've been in contact with Rick about taking the comments that were done at the last meeting, adding them to the matrix. Also comments from this meeting and possibly the next meeting and adding to the matrix. He's going to do that. Staff first has to go back and listen to the meeting and write them all down for him. Also, as kind of a preparatory thing for when we get to the board level and also at the last few meetings of the planning commission, if you notice, when you go through the, the online version, those PDFs, they're, they're pretty stagnant. The things on there don't change. I know there was a concern from Commissioner Johnson that if you were to focus in on those PDFs, like the labels over the roads, those don't shrink like they would in a GIS file. So what's happening now is Rick from Matrix is working with our GIS department over in Rapid City. Not our department, but Rapid City's department, and they're going to put a layer of future, future land use proposed layer on Rapid Map based on the recommendations from Matrix. So not, so that way, staff and the public can look at it in a way that they can focus down to a specific lot without having things encumbered over top of it. So that's going to come into play later.
Will that matrix be printed out and handed to us, or do we have to go online to get it?
This one?
Well, I have, I have the one, well, the first one.
Correct, and that has not changed yet. When it changes, we can definitely send you guys hard copies or print them. We are going to put a bunch of the information from all the meetings on the website, on the View to 2040 website. So it'll be available for the public there as well, but we'll make sure you get it in any way you need it.
Yeah, I'd like to have it in my hand and look at it, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So when is the next, when are we to address the next group of chapters?
Today.
Today.
Oh.
Four, five, and six, I think is what our goal was. Is that correct?
Correct, and you are also scheduled to hear it again at the next meeting. So what, what the plan is, is when you guys are done going through the book, Matrix is going to redo the comp plan based on your, your recommendations.
I see.
We're going to have kind of two versions or one version with some edits. Then you'll hear it again, you'll consider it again in its entirety. Once you're done with that and after it's all published appropriately after that meeting, then it will go to the board for their first hearing. And the same process will probably unfold there.
Got it.
So, Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
PJ, so if we want to put, if we're finding that there's sensitive areas, if there's floodway or something that gives us a heads up, how would we do that in the future? Do layout or not?
Overlay.
Overlays.
I think you had mentioned overlays before. Similar to what we're planning to do is similar to what Rapid City does, is they have overlay districts. They don't necessarily, as far as I know, have a geography one, but I do know they have a flood overlay, which is one of the things that staff is going to request to have changed, because there's different requirements that fall when you're in a floodway.
Right.
Or flood, special flood hazard area.
And how about for septics and stuff? Will we have some overlays that we're going to kind of look at? So what it does, it kind of, areas that gives us a heads up as planning commissioners or commissioners that we can take a closer look at some of the areas that might be, you know, having some bedrock or some floodway, or like you said, you have the.
Yeah, there are definitely, there's soil analysis for the county and we can definitely use that, look at that and get with environmental planning or planning supervisor and her staff and see what type of overlays that we could do for each property.
Do you think that's a positive or, or just something?
Overdue. I think it's a positive, yes, absolutely.
Thank you, PJ.
All right.
We'll be on chapter four, sir.
Yep, we're starting on chapter four. For those of y'all who were here last time, were either one of you commissioners, if you weren't here? Were you on our, last time around, Deb?
Nope. It was a.
All right, so we're just going to kind of roll through these. What we did last time is we kind of went through the comments page by page, addressed them, either said we agree and let's move on, or added any other changes. And then as we were going along too, if we were on page four too, and, and you had a specific comment for change or, or whatnot, then we did that as well. Kind of just walking through. And then as we did those changes, we voted on all of them at the very end. So the goal is I, to go through four, five, and six if we can.
Do we have that in our packet?
Uh, which part?
Four, five, and six.
Four, five, and six.
It should be in the, just the comp plan itself, chapter four.
In the comp plan.
Did you need another one?
No, I didn't bring it. That's my fault, PJ.
We might, there might be one in the office, because you probably.
This is in the comp plan, is it?
Yep, that's the questions that we've been going through.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's right. You weren't here. It's just you and I were here last time, Sonny.
Yeah, I wasn't here the last day.
Oh, you were. Holy, I was the only one out of this group that was here.
It's the last.
Am I?
Yep, that looks like it, yeah.
Okay, tell DeSanto.
Yep, and.
Do you have it? Not in your packet?
Not in my packet. How come you have one in your packet?
You told DeSanto.
You're special.
I'm special.
Well, hold on a second. You might have, are you going to pause the meeting, because you're going to lose quorum here in a second?
Hold on just a second, Deb. She's going to holler.
Oh, she technically leave.
I think she's talking about that.
I'll check with hers.
Yeah, are you talking about the matrix?
Is she?
No, that, that's the, that's the comp plan. There's a comment sheet. They call it the matrix.
And it's in there too? I didn't see it.
No, so we're going to need to get you a copy of that.
Sorry.
That way you at least have the questions that we're walking through.
I think Mark has one. Do you have one of these?
Do you have the comment stuff?
No, I don't. I've got.
You're going to need to get them.
Sonny, do you have?
I don't have either.
Sonny doesn't have them either.
I don't have a blank one.
I don't have access to that.
Maybe you can.
Can we take a five minute?
You mind if we make a quick copy of yours?
Can we have a five-minute break? Motion, five-minute break?
Okay, motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
To re-adjourn?
I move to re-adjourn.
Motion and second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose no. We are back in session. I don't know why I said re-adjourn.
That's why I was like.
Resume. I was like, wait a minute, that didn't come out right.
I thought the same.
Wonder what that meant.
All right, thank y'all for at least understanding what I meant, even though I used the wrong terms. Maybe I do need extra coffee. All right, so as I realized that I'm the only one who was here last meeting, so to know the process. So let's walk through what we did last meeting. We, we, our goal was to get through chapters one through three last week, or last meeting. And we ran basically through the, the matrix questions. We read through, verified whether we agreed with the comments on them or not, any of the changes. Most of the ones that are on here saying requested change to be made based on available data. You know, we went through, we agreed with those because we already agreed with that. Not that we all have to agree on that, but if we agree on it, we're just kind of going all the way down through. And then when we got to the end, we just, we did one final vote to approve all the changes that we wanted moved forward. So unless there is a better way, it seemed to go pretty quick. We just, if we were on page 4.1, as it says here, item number 26. And we addressed that issue, but you also had an issue. We wanted to address your issue on there as well, so. If it's not on the, on the matrix sheet.
Correct, and because the agenda doesn't specifically say what chapters we're going over, if anybody wants to go back.
That's correct.
One through three, we can readdress those as well.
Oh, good, okay.
Yep, so if there's something in one through three that, if you didn't get to hear our meeting, then obviously we can go back and see if we touched on it.
Is this the whole packet we're going through?
I'm not sure what was copied.
Oh, the question should be all the way through. It looks like you've got all the, well, she's got all the questions here.
Oh, but the main, it doesn't seem to tell me which chapter it references.
So right here? Page three dash one.
Oh, oh, I see. I see. I see.
So yeah, since all four of y'all weren't here last meeting, if there's something that y'all feel like y'all need to address for sections one through three, we can go back and touch on those particular areas. I know we had a lot of discussion on that one. It took us about an hour. Actually, it took us a little over an hour for that particular meeting. So, but we made it through the first three chapters. So I guess maybe we should start. Does anybody want to readdress anything in chapters one through three?
Were all of the items addressed in this matrix?
Every item that was on the matrix was addressed.
Okay, and then we will be getting an updated one that.
As we get through, yes.
That reflects the comments that were made. Okay, well, then I think we should just go ahead to four, five, and six.
Yes, Travis, because we pretty much didn't see chapters and we don't have time to read all.
Right.
So we might as well move forward on this one.
That's what I.
I have one question in three dash nine.
Three dash nine.
Number nine?
On page three dash nine?
Three dash nine.
Okay.
Building codes?
Building codes.
Where are we going with that?
What was the recommendation? We, I think we did talk about that, PJ, did we not?
Yep, you didn't make any changes to that. It was more of a support to keep it in there.
There was some support, some not support, just depends. There was some support, some not support, just depends.
But it didn't change anything.
But we didn't change anything at that point.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed to know. Commissioner Alastair, before we go on to chapter four, staff does not object to any of the comments that were made that are located on that matrix. There are some items on there that are requested for planning commission discussion, item thirty-two and thirty-five at least. And then as you get into thirty-six and thirty-seven, thirty-eight, if you need more explanation of what we do do with the, the air surfaces around the Ellsworth Air Force Base and Regional Airport, we can describe that a little bit more for you.
Okay. Any questions before moving forward or any other things to deal, to address? All right, item number twenty-six, page four one, third paragraph. If you take a look at that and see if y'all agree with the change.
Yes, I agree that the regional health should be included.
Be added. If there's no objection to that, is there any other individual inputs for four one? Next item is four two. Recommendation would be to include top industries in the county as well as revenue generated by each industry.
That makes sense as well.
What, what he's stating there is the document that preceded this, the information is in there, but they can just carry over a, a chart if you'd like.
Why do, why do people care if, how much they make?
Yeah, I don't know. To me.
I don't think that, I think it's irrelevant. I think that their top revenue generators is enough that.
Especially since it's covered in the background report. I mean, is there a need to put in the revenue that they make in a comp plan? I mean, what does that, I mean, if somebody before they move a business here, you're going to look at the comp plan and go, ooh, social such business generates this kind of revenue, maybe I want to move there.
Well, it's more appropriate in the document that it already exists.
Right.
Not really so much in the comp plan. And as far as I know, that's the only comment that came in requesting that information.
I see.
I don't see where revenue data needs to be added.
Say again?
I don't think revenue data needs to be added.
I agree.
Okay, I agree. No revenue to be added?
I don't have a comment.
Okay. Anything else on four two? All right, four three. There's a recommendation that would include significant tourism of Pennington County. Requested changes to be made. Anybody have a problem with that? Requested changes are to be made?
No.
PJ, comment? What do you say?
We're fine with that.
Yeah, they're fine with all the recommended changes on here.
Okay.
All right, item number, anything else on four three? Well, there's item, let's see. Item twenty-nine, last in this paragraph, Black Hill State University could also be integrated with Ellsworth Air Force Base by offering an incubator program on the campus.
That's in Pennington County, is it?
Hell.
Well, part of.
Yeah, they have, they have an extension campus here.
Is it the university out there?
I see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You okay?
Wrong tube? Wrong tube?
Need me to get you some water PJ?
It doesn't help if it went down the wrong tube.
Refer to basically like ROTC or type of program?
That I'm not sure.
Andrew was in the National Guard, that's why these, remember he was the guy with the helicopter pad in Keystone?
Yes, I'm familiar with who he, yeah.
Incubator program. I'm fine with this.
Isn't the point of this that it states Black Hill State University but not other schools?
Well, other schools already have, I don't know, just maybe, maybe that's a better question. Does Black Hill State not have access to the base, what they're schooling? Because I know many of the other schools locally do. They have classes on base and things of that nature, so.
I don't know.
I don't know if this plays into that or.
I know the National Guard's out of the Young Center down there, so I know they have some presence.
Okay.
Sure they have access up here.
I mean, do we just need more information on this, how this impacts?
Should we, should we even name a specific university or maybe just say higher level academic campuses to be general?
Well, it already says it in the comp plan here.
Recommendation would be to include other higher level academic campuses that are actually based in Pennington County.
Is Black Hill State University actually called out in, in chapter four specifically?
Here you go.
You all right PJ?
Just got to get out of camera range, yeah. I think I'll be all right.
Would you like a cough drop?
No, I don't need that. I think we're okay. I'll find out.
Yeah, I don't know why specifically Black Hill State University, because there's already university access on, on the base.
I think because Black Hill State University is, their central campus is spearfish. Out of Pennington County.
Hmm.
So maybe they're including it.
At the bottom of the page.
Include it because of the extension campus that's in Pennington County.
Bottom page of, um, page four.
Four three.
Four three.
Right, that's where I'm looking at.
Way at the bottom. It's talking about Black Hill State University.
Maybe I missed a comment, but is there a specific reason why a university should be called out by name rather than just being more general about it?
Right.
Yeah, that's what I'm missing. Why is it that particular?
So put universities could also be integrated with the Ellsworth, by offering incubator programs.
And doesn't USD have an extension program here also?
Yes. So you're right. Can we put university? PJ, does it make sense or?
Do you know what he's ultimately getting at? Huh? Do you know what he's ultimately getting at with that statement? I just.
I'm just assuming because of his background, he just wants it in the comp plan. It just wants it mentioned.
He just wants higher level academic campuses rather than just Black Hill State. I mean, that's.
Well, the county should support the continued mission of Ellsworth Air Force Base. It's saying the, what we should support, future, probably for economic.
Right, so basically what's there currently is Black Hill State University. His recommendation is crossing that out and placing higher level academic campuses could be integrated, which, that we cover all other than just one, which I'm okay with.
Including any new schools that may open up.
Right.
We're changing that? You're okay with that PJ?
Well, the wording in his recommendation, I think, is the higher level academic campuses is, if y'all are okay with that one. That, that way it's not only one particular school.
I think what he was trying to say is we should list all of them, but maybe it's easier to just not list any of them and just be more general about it.
Exactly.
Exactly. Give them all the opportunity. Any other comments on four three? The next one down, item thirty, is recommendation would be to include South Dakota National Guard in this area with the economic impact of Camp Rapid, West Camp Aviation Support. That change is already being made, so unless anybody has a change to that particular change.
Okay. We don't need number thirty-one, do we? We just did it.
Okay.
Right?
Yep, we just did thirty-one. Well, technically what it is twenty-nine, but yes.
That's a section four four.
Oh, that is in section, that is four four.
So we're going to put it twice?
Two.
He's just changing the wording of the goal on that one.
Point two.
The goals will reflect what's in the paragraph section.
Right, so yeah, just changing that goal to reflect the same thing that we placed previously. Y'all following along?
Is this causing people to cough?
No, no. I've had a lingering cough for like three weeks now. It's, it's finally waning. It's, it's almost gone.
But same thing again?
Yeah, it's the same situation instead of naming a specific university.
Right.
Should do the same as we did in four three.
Right, that's what, yeah, because it's just making the goal match up with what's in the, in the document. Item number, item number thirty-two, which is page four five, ED four. This is Sandy's.
And this one was recommended for discussion or?
Yes.
Yeah, because I, you know, I felt that, I, I don't believe that the county needs to be actively involved in tourism. I believe there are other industries that are involved, you know, with the tourism business. You've got your hotel associations, your retail associations, your various other groups. And I think the county should not be a part of that. I think it should be left to the local communities. You know, Wall has its, you know, tourism type of.
Right.
Of people, so it just seems to be a duplication of efforts to have the county.
One more government entity involved.
Say again?
Guys, we have a lot of.
More government entity involved.
Well, we have a lot of tourism in the county, Pennington County, sixteen in different areas. So I think if anything we could do to help is basically what they're saying to add.
Yeah, I just didn't feel we needed a special tourism division.
No.
You know, we should assist in any way.
Or we could, we could put it a different way, should, should do something, but not have a joint, you're right, joint tourism task force. We can have someone maybe appointed to a tourism thing or something, but we do have economic development. We were appointed to as commissioners. We have the chamber. We have different things that we're already involved in that would include that. So.
Yeah, I just believe allowing support versus being a specific leader or, you know, being in charge of tourism. I think we should merely support the groups that are already involved with it.
Which is what goal four point five says, which is what, we do that now.
Okay, good.
But that's only for four, five, number thirty-two on the matrix. Doesn't address the rest of.
Thank you.
So looking at goal ED dash four, what would y'all like to see come out or go in or changed?
Number three, four three you mean?
Four three removed?
Yeah.
How about four two, with the county should research and pursue grant funding to increase tourism and other business opportunities to support new industry?
Nope.
I think that should be removed as well.
To remove that as well? The other three goals, four one, four four and four five seem appropriate. I don't quite understand four four though.
County should seek value added agriculture opportunities in eastern plains. It has nothing to do with this.
Agrotourism?
What, yeah, what do you not understand about it?
Well, I, if you've got ranchers or if you've already got businesses that are established out there, what is the county going to do to make them change? Or maybe, you know what I mean? Maybe I'm looking at it in a different perspective, but if I've already established stuff, I mean, there's a lot of farms, ranches established out there. What is the county going to do to maybe change their mind, I guess, if I'm?
Do they mean eastern plains like Wall and that area?
Hmm.
Okay.
Right.
I think maybe this would lead or lend to possibility of, tax incentives for new business.
So more, this is more on the tax incentive side of things?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Am I way off base or?
Large, large scale, I mean, processing has come up as a.
Someone explained value added agricultural opportunities, value added, I mean, how do you?
Right, that's, I guess that's my, that's my question, because it's not like the county's going to go out and be like, hey, we would really like for you to consider putting a.
Unless the state changes something that, how they do their formulas, we're really not going to add to it unless you, like you said, you get tips or different stuff like that, but.
That's what I'm talking about though. Yes.
Value added agriculture.
Tips for agricultural?
That's what I'm saying.
For agricultural development for, like a eggplant? Giving them.
Ah.
Does that have that, PJ, do you have anything to add on that?
For their first five years to establish, to incentivize them to come to.
No, I pulled up a, just growing crops.
So value added, we're talking about as opposed to just standard agriculture, they're maybe having facilities so that they're doing their product, right? It's not just the.
There's a, I just did a quick, well, this would be Bing search and it came up. Value added agriculture refers to most generally to manufacturing process that increases the value of primary agricultural commodities. If that really helps us at all, but.
So that's good.
So if hemp, for example, passes, then there could be right there next to the farm hemp factory to, to process it into rope and that kind of stuff.
Yeah. I think this is good to encourage these kind of, this kind of growth.
Encouraging them, yes, but I guess where I see it, it's the county seeking it versus an individual saying, hey, this hemp, hemp farmer just came up over here. Now I should take my property. Maybe I can build the rope processing business rather.
Well, I think that that, that would, yeah, I mean, that's going to go without saying, I would think.
So.
Maybe you could change the word.
Number thirty-five adds to that, but it, it relates to the same four four. If you look at thirty-five with Johnson's. Did you see that?
I see that.
Those are kind of the same. So actually thirty-four and thirty-five, so we've just answered that.
I think thirty-five is addressing more the environmental impact of a industry as opposed to encouraging value added growth.
Yeah, I think there's a difference between those. But maybe.
So in other words, thirty-five is, is probably more addressing things like wind power, solar power, mining in a way that is the most efficient without, and doing the least impact to the environment.
Environment is this environmentally sustainable manner is what she put, so.
So back to goal four four, I think as PJ hinted, maybe the, instead of putting seek, the county should seek, maybe the word seek would be better stated as support or encourage or. I mean, supports is actually part of the heading on this section.
Support would be good.
I like support.
I like support.
It's support value added agriculture.
I don't think seek is the right word for that.
See that, that I feel better with. It's almost like you're trying to say seek and then work to push them in.
Right.
In a manner that's not, that may not be conducive to certain property owners or the property owner nearby. I don't know, there's just maybe it's the wording. So what word, what word do we put in there?
Support instead of seek.
Support.
Then four or five, the county should work with other adjacent counties, other regional economic development. Any spend, prove the economic base of Pennington County, period. Don't think it has to have what we need to do. I think hopefully we can figure that out. Said it's name and specifics.
Yeah, because all of those other regional economic development, development entities are basically encompassing Ellsworth National Parks and Agriculture.
Right.
So just stop right at the.
County.
County, last sentence.
Yeah. Don't think you need all the other in there. Hopefully we know what that is.
Yeah, is there any reason to name, be really specific? Because when you are that specific, it's almost as if you're excluding others, others, like with the university thing.
I agree.
All right.
They keep doing that over and over again in this and I don't, I agree. Especially if you're in economic development and you're doing other stuff, then this starts to be.
Any other input on these? I'm trying to go through these questions. Thirty-two, it looks like we've kind of addressed that a little bit. Item thirty-three, I'm still looking on the question marks. We're still right here in ED four, dealing with all this wording here. Because all these thirty-two through thirty-five roughly deal with ED four.
ED.
On page four five.
Right here.
Goal ED dash four.
The last thing I thought we changed was we put support on four four and we just crossed out especially related to.
Right, and we also deleted ED four three and ED four two, that, at least that's what I took from our conversations.
Correct.
Yep.
Number five, I don't know if you need that.
ED four five?
Yeah.
Well, we're just talking about putting a period after the, no, I meant
No, I think she's going down to section five.
Oh, I see.
Oh, well, hold on, there's still some of these that we're addressing in four, in ED four, because like, um, item number thirty-three on the questions here, tourism task force, which we already addressed that one, thirty-four, Kathy Johnson's talking about the four point one, establishing general policy for the county, and then there's some more in that dealing with, well, we got rid of four point three, that doesn't affect.
And they already have, like, economic development and different tourism task force throughout Rapid City and the surround spearfish, deadwood. I mean, they would come to us if they needed, you know, we support them
Right.
in a sense, but, um, we don't really need to put
We have to be involved all the time, no matter what.
Right, we don't need a task force.
Correct.
Separate.
And then item thirty-five, which is, um, Kathy Johnson's as well, it looks like she was saying ED four
Same thing.
point six, that statement.
Went to add one.
She wanted to add a statement. Which I think
I think we addressed it by just putting a period that we support. There's four, ED four, six, seven.
I think it's a little different.
It is different, because this is dealing with natural resources.
She wants to add four, six, make a four, six?
Correct, what she has in quotes there, she wants to add that as four, well, what would be four, six, but it'll probably be four, four if you add.
Right, whenever you get all the numbers readjusted.
Four, five currently reads expand and improve, and her suggestion is to say allow for development, but what is the real difference other than specifics of natural resources?
I agree.
Is there a way to incorporate that wording?
I don't think you need it, I think you're adding more of the same, because hopefully from economic development, you know, that's mining and any other, um, business that includes that.
Yeah, it seems redundant to me.
They'd have to define economic development then, or regional economic development, but we could do that later.
I think it's more of the same of what we just talked about.
Okay, so you're saying no to that one, four, six? Because it's already in generally encompassed.
Right, I think number thirty-five is covered in four, five as it is.
And I'm sorry, thirty-three from, um, Marx, that was, no also?
Correct, no on that one.
Thank you.
Um, if I do remember somebody, Deb, was it you that made mention of ED five?
Yeah.
We've got a couple of them here that are ED five here, so thirty-six, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight address ED five, so I don't know if these might address your issue or your thoughts.
They keep putting different, the same companies in here, and then we do definitions and stuff of them. Is that what we do in economic development?
Sorry.
Wow.
It's just name.
I was trying to get my settings organized.
From the beginning, we put in four, one, in front of the page of economic development, four economic development elements will also be examined at our paramount to the county. These are tourism, value-added agriculture, airport, Ellsworth. Um, I'm not getting why we keep saying the same ones, and then we, throughout the whole economic development. I mean, we should say them, but we've made them kind of like our base. Meaning, that's what we believe is the main goals or the main areas of economic development in, we don't have mining or anything else in here.
I know the base in the airport are mentioned specifically because of the amount of money that they bring into the county, and then also because of our office and the count, and, and the county in general, we have, we oversee the development around those, and if we don't develop them in relation to how those op, those bases operate
Right.
we could influence those operations and cause problems in the future.
Base closure, I mean, there's all kinds of
The county supports the joint land use study that was done by Matrix on Ellsworth Air Force Base, and so does Mead County and Box Elder and Rapid City, so that we're not going to do anything that harms the base.
Right.
But so is mining, how many millions of dollars does mining bring in compared to some of these drivers that are in here? Have we studied that? Do you see what I'm saying? Do we, do we mention mining because it brings millions of dollars in? Just example. So, that's what I'm saying, so we've, we're naming four economic development el- elements, instead of putting it in a general category of, you know, what are the economic drivers in Pennington County? Do we know those, just those four are? And that's, we've described them throughout this whole book. And if you were someone that was an economic driver and you brought millions of dollars into besides these, you'd be like, okay, that's, that's going to be their goals.
I think this, um, page four dash one, that last paragraph, he explains why he mentions them, because his words, he concern, he calls them the, that they're paramount. Uh, four economic development el- elements will also be examined that are paramount to the county, so I guess they determine
Where are you reading that?
Last paragraph, four point, four dash one, page four dash one, first page of chapter four. So I think that's why he's pulling them out, just those four.
As, but, per, look at paragraph two, in this element, the historical growth trends of residential development are examined, this providing an understanding of where people are choosing to live in the county, thereby identifying concentration of established workforce. Is he just talking about the workforce or, a- and again, additionally, the concentration of existing jobs is examined there, thereby identifying the locations where industry clusters would allow employees to draw productive vans for proximity and connection to other employees. Then he goes into those four. You see what I'm saying? That doesn't make any sense, because you're missing some key players.
Those four are like key exemptions, like, are key specific, huge economic drivers, right? Like your PJ was saying, that other counties and the cities are specifically focused on, so that's why they're called out.
We have a special ordinance just for Ellsworth Air Force Base compatibility, and we have documents that we have to have signed for building permits, well, landowners sign them for, if the FAA wants them, they can take them because of the certain heights of things. These are, these four staff has mentioned to Matrix, and also I believe they came up a lot during, um,
Well, the
public meetings. Sorry.
The commonality here is they all have to do with the FAA. All of them, that they're mentioning in ED five.
So once we start, sorry.
They're just covering these specific entities that have to do with flight and aerial stuff, airport, Ellsworth Air Force Base, uh, Army National Guard, life flight, FUGRO, aerial firefighting, they're all covered under aviation.
And I'll show you something that you guys may not have seen, or very few of you may have seen. So, Ellsworth Air Force Base has what's called an ACUS, an air compat, air installation compatibility use zone. If anybody wants to build as, um, and this is mainly for mobile homes, but we do let everybody else, we do let other residents know. If they want to build within one of those ACUS areas, they sign a document stating that they understand that those areas could be of greater disturbance because of the fl, of the planes. This mainly is something that Ellsworth has asked the county to adopt, the county adopted it years ago, it was re-supported again in their current J-Lu study update, um, so that we're not, so that basically the, Ellsworth doesn't keep getting a lot of complaints of people that move there, well, you know, it was a airport, you signed the document.
You're saying the document, Sam, you understand.
You did it, also
Path of the B-one bomber.
ACUS, A-I-C-U-Z, air installation compatibility use zone. And section three fifteen of our zoning ordinance, which you probably don't hear that much, probably the first time I've ever said it up here, is the Ellsworth compatibility ordinance that we have. So we just don't let anything get built up there. Also, for the regional airport, we don't have ACUS, um, information, and this might be a little bit more difficult to get, uh, as a, but we have to look at these areas as part seventy-seven, crash zones, takeoff, and flight zones, approach conical zones. Um, if you can see, it takes a lot of the county.
This is talking about, I'm listening to you PJ, but this is talking about workforce, so
This is to help support that, and that the county doesn't allow any structures or construction that's going to cause a problem for either the airport or Ellsworth.
But again
So these are things that we look at.
This is economic development element. So, remember it's economic development, what, what are some drivers? Maybe those are the four key drivers in Rapid City, and then you go to the next page, which if you looked at the city when they did theirs, was the four highest paying, or not highest paying, the most jobs were Walmart, the schools, government, and regional health. Regional health was first, then, uh, Rapid City, and then some, or maybe their schools were first, I can't remember they, how they had theirs, and then Walmart. So, they had a list of economic drivers and, um,
Who, who had the list?
The city or, or with their economic development.
Oh, I see.
So, um
Deb, I think we're getting away from the specific idea of what this particular ordinance, I guess, is trying to address, and what it's basically trying to address is that the county is going to help in not allowing for a situation that would interfere with these particular types of employment. In other words, as PJ's stating, if, if we don't work in support of Ellsworth and Rapid City in that, we're not warning homeowners that build their, their developments within the flight path of the B-one bomber, that, hey, you're going to have to deal with a lot of noise. Don't come back and later on sue Ellsworth or, or, you know, we're trying to avoid creating problems for these specific entities. Whereas other entities like Walmart, for example, um, they're not causing this kind of, of possible, uh, disturbance, complaint problems that, that would, uh, that result from their operation of their business.
They kind of break it down on goals and policies. On some of their stuff, if you look at four, page four, four, I see what you're saying.
So I think if your concern is, is that other entities are going to feel like they're left out, this is completely separate from supporting other entities that are, and we have no idea what's going to come here in, in the future. So we couldn't, we couldn't possibly include all economic drivers, because we could wind up with Microsoft in our backyard, for all we know. Then, then we got to include them later on down the road.
So even things like mining and logging is getting a little too specific, it's a lot different from Ellsworth and
Right.
those things, which are clearly an exception, once you start saying logging, mining, and then the list just could go on and on and on.
They're huge economic drivers.
Do what?
But they're huge economic drivers in our county.
They are, but they're
Especially with all the forests, we've got one point two mile, million miles of
Right. It's a little bit a different impact on the community, forestry and mining compared to Ellsworth and the regional airport, too.
Maybe we should put some, something in there that says that we do care about the other industries or something, I don't know if you need to do that or not, or that they're also, should be included, or maybe it's just nonchalant because he wants to get to the four.
Well, I think it's just focused on aeronautical, though. That's just, that's the focus only of ED five, is aeronautical.
But they have that page that has top employers.
If the county wants to support specific things like mining and logging, then then it's almost like saying, well, those are the things that we support, and what about the rest? I think it's back to this, how specific do you want, you know, call out these specific universities, or just say higher institutions, or or learning, uh, academic institutions, or mining and logging, or do we just want to say major economic drivers so we can encompass everything?
Um, so, they might mention some of this in agriculture or somewhere where I'm missing it, because I haven't read this whole book. So maybe they have it. They have a, on the next set, so, in five.
And we'll also, we'll also take your comments, put them in, and let Matrix address them as well, so you'll have them.
Okay. Okay.
Thirty-six?
Item thirty-six, four, five, ED five. There's a, there's a, the response is that requested changes to be made, uh, any thoughts? That is a broader co, encompassing, National Guard, Air Force.
That's if you wanted to.
Right.
And he owns a helipad.
Well, yes, he does.
Helicopter, so is he.
This is the same thing again, where it's naming Ellsworth and regional airport, but the recommendation is to say military bases and commercial aviation.
That's what it should say on ED five. I agree.
You think it should be more general?
Yes, military bases and what'd you say?
Com, it says military bases and facilities and commercial aviation. Which that commercial aviation, when you look at some of it that's already currently in the community, is in line with the tourism.
What, what did you say, Sonny? Is that what you said, military bases and
Just reading what the recommendation is, is to change it from being specifically named to being generally named, military bases and commercial aviation, facilities and commercial aviation.
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's, it's like what we did on four point five.
Right.
Yep.
It gives that support, and it makes it broader to all that it would affect, in this particular case, life flight as well.
So
Does anybody know that if somebody say, say has a life flight helicopter or a tourism, I mean, and they have a specific corridor through FAA that they can fly, does that prohibit any construction on the ground?
No. For life flight.
No.
Not for life, but for, say, commercial stuff.
I don't know.
I mean, I know it does around the airports, because, I mean, it could take six months of approval just to get a shed built sometimes, but we, we cut that down to five seconds.
So I have a question on five, two. Disclo, how do we do disco, the county should require disclosure statements for any residential developed within adjacent to airport noise contours.
So I can tell you what we have right now, that we have an air, ACUS statement that is done, and it's pulling up right here, it's very simple. If anybody falls within that noise contour for Ellsworth, because I don't know, we don't have numbers for Rapids, for the regional airport. They are required to sign this, get it notarized, which we can do at our desk, and we make it part of the building permit.
And can we do that for, um, same with bussies and some other people that are doing, in the county, doing, um, aviation or, like Custer has?
Well, the, the thing is, is
We don't do Custer, but
On Rapid Map
Right.
It's been studied, it's been quantified, it's, it's a layer. We don't necessarily know, looking at aerials, all the different strips or helicopter companies in the county to be able to do this. This has a very definite where it is. Um, and I think Andrew had brought that up during the Shriner request of some type of statement. But how far, where is it, what, what are the ramifications of that for, for, um, you know, use of the land? I mean, this has been studied and quantified, and this is what everybody's agreed on. We, we could look at doing something that's more widespread and doing the commercial, commercial stuff.
And should there be residential, and how should that be developed around anything that has helicopters, um, planes and any, any aviation equipment, instead of just the airport? How, how do, how do we address that?
How would we address it? Know what you know before you buy, I, I would think, but know what's there before you buy it.
That doesn't happen, though. What happens is, is
I agree.
So how do we make that i- in part of this? The county should require disclosure statements for any residential developed within a I don't know, flight zone for noise contours.
We'd have to know what those flight paths are
Right.
and put them on to the, on the Rapid Map.
And I, I don't think that in the case of a commercial helicopter tourism business that there are any specific fight, flight plans.
Nope.
You know, if somebody says, I want to fly over Bear Mountain Lookout
Right.
and I'll give you an extra hundred dollars, they're going to fly him over Bear Mountain Lookout. So, you know, um, whereas with Rapid City Regional, I believe, nope, life flight wouldn't have a specific flight pattern because who knows where they're going, but Rapid City Regional and Ellsworth all have specific flight plans.
But some disclosures, so people know before they buy that property that's in an area that's in an area where somebody spent millions of dollars to put it there, that there should be some disclosure on those lots that, when people buy those, 'cause we, we just did that or tried to do that, that warranty to the deed?
Well, I think that's how we gotta do it. I don't think we can
I've gotten confused.
So what's the distance, the ACOUs? What's the distance from?
It, it varies. I'll pull it back up for you here. It varies.
It all depends on what the flight path is, correct?
Mm-hmm. And this was just updated last few years.
But is it primarily like three thousand feet, five thousand feet, fifteen hundred feet?
Oh. Out, or are you talking about elevation?
Well, let's just, let's just take, no, not elevation. I'm just talking about whenever somebody is, you know, for the flight path coming in or, or departing Ellsworth.
So we, so we don't have the flight plat, patterns for Ellsworth. We have the flight patterns generally for the regional airport. All we have are the noise contours for Ellsworth. That's what these are.
Oh, that's all you have is the noise?
Just the noise contours.
And this, didn't you say that that was something that they had to sign off on? Get it notarized and?
Someone's building a residence mainly for a single-family home. And as you can see, it's not a lot of the county. We make them sign the ACOUs.
Yeah.
As a, yes.
But if they're building in the noise contours, they have to sign it? Nothing outside of those noise, noise contours?
Correct.
So it's only in the noise contours? Okay.
And as you can see, there's not much of the county that has that. So it doesn't happen much, but it happens.
Yeah, 'cause most of it's all end of mead.
And it looks to me like that noise contour doesn't necessarily have to do with exactly where the plane is flying. It, it, it's a, based on an acoustic
Yes.
reflection.
Right.
Depending on the land.
Correct. But then if you go, if you go to more flight patterns for the, for the regional airport, that's more defined.
Okay.
Do we have anything in here about that? PJ, about decimal levels or anything on, by residential areas?
So if we, so if the county continues to support the J-LOSE, the joint land use with Ellsworth, it would be covered through that document.
Or any other business with aviation? How do we cover that? Meaning, 'cause
Well, we don't...
that's their biggest complaint. Remember, even with the ACDC converter is that the decibel level within residential? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. I know one of the ways that Ellsworth is combating that is they have an Ellsworth Developmental Authority, a private arm, and they're buying up land, and they have forever, for as long as they've been existence around. They just bought, they're buying up mobile home parks. We know that because we're seeing them come into the county 'cause they're trying to create a, a land buffer around, yeah.
But even for, okay, let's go back to Andrew. For his helipad and where he's at, do we, do we need to start putting a certain amount? I mean, he put his stuff there, his, his business there because it was commercial and our highway service.
Right.
So how far do we do? And, and do we say anything? We should buffer it? Should, I mean, there comes to a point, guys, that we need to protect the businesses that do do and spend, um, a million dollars on or two million. And that somehow that we protect the residents, knowing that those decibel levels or that helicopter's gonna be flying over the top of you. I mean...
So there'd be have, there'd have to be an expenditure of money to do those studies to find out what those noise contours are and then what properties are affected. And then are you looking at where it's based or also what it's flying over? 'Cause then that noise contour could follow where they're going.
Well, I think he would, he would know, 'cause you, you're gonna do a helipad and you, you gotta know that you're gonna be flying over lots of residential areas. So you're not gonna really nail it down to a flight path or anything like that. You're gonna have to nail it down to it, takeoff or landing or whatever. When, 'cause the decibel level will dissipate.
True.
Does that make sense? So how far is that decibel level affecting you? 'Cause if he's in highway service or commercial, he's got a buffer before he, you know, when he takes off. Is, am I being out of line, meaning?
No, I understand where you're coming from. You're specifically, specifically dealing with takeoff and landing.
Basically, isn't that the highest level, decimal level?
Highest level of the, the, of noise that's gonna affect any adjacent buildings or surrounding?
And how far should that be? You know, what I'm saying? With the study, you could, the whole area, the Black Hills, when they're flying over it.
How many millimeter feet out would it be?
Right. Like, is it five acres? Is it three acres?
Probably that is, is that like this new ba, this new one he's looking for. There's hills surrounding and separating him from the residences. And by the time he clears the top of those hills, he's already gonna be, you know, the, the sound's gonna already have dissipated. Whereas with the helipad off of sixteen A going down into Keystone, he's taking off within a, um, uh, basically a valley that's gonna contain the sound. So we, I mean, it's gonna vary so much for every different location.
Right.
You, you see what I'm saying? It's just like the one over, the one going to Custer. He's affecting those people in the valley in there, but a house on the other side of the hill isn't even hearing him. So you'd, you'd have to, you couldn't just give a blanket, a half-mile because for some of these helipads, that half-mile
Wouldn't affect anything.
Wouldn't affect anything.
Well, I think the decimal level, once you're up a certain height, it won't matter just to, unless you're in an enclosed valley. Do you mean a canyon?
Right.
So...
The comp plan is very general. Something specifically what you're asking for can be addressed in the zoning ordinance.
Okay.
So we could address it there. But we, oh. But that doesn't negate the, the number thirty-six where you might wanna change the wording. 'Cause that's what would drive the zoning ordinance direction of how you word that.
Oh, from the should?
Uh, no, we're on number, number thirty-six. You wanted to put more commercial. I don't think you guys had approved, uh, agreed on that yet.
I don't know.
I thought we were talking about thirty-seven.
Oh.
Yeah, we were on thirty-seven. I thought we pretty much agreed with, um, thirty-six and we were discussing thirty-seven.
And I must've missed that one. I, I mean, that it was done, okay.
We changed it to military, military bases and commercial aviation. Total ED-dash-five.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And we moved to thirty-seven and that's what got us talking on this.
Okay.
Uh, I, I was wondering, on the way eighty-five point-two states airport, airport noise contours, is that something that would require such a study, right? So that...
Again, I'm, I, I don't know if the regional airport has one or not. I, it's, it's not on Rapid Map 'cause we basically follow the, the airspace.
For helipads and other FAA-recognized airports or heliports, having the need for contours would probably be excessive, so...
There's a lot more in the county than you think.
Lot more what? Contours?
Fields.
Oh, airfields?
There's a few, there's some private ones, yeah.
So any residential development wouldn't work either for, for, within or adjacent to?
I think the purpose of the, of the recommendation is that when it comes to airport, airport noise contours, that would only refer to Ellsworth or the regional airport. But if you wanted to include other airports and heliports, then we're not gonna be able to say noise contours.
Right.
We just have to say within or adjacent to them.
That would mean that we would, that they would have to require that for all the residences around Rapid City Regional Hospital, where they have a helipad. I, I think that's going overboard.
Well, I would say the county should require disclosure statements on new residential within or adjacent to FAA-recognized airports or heliports. Airports or heliports, because everybody else is already in there. Meaning, if you're there, I'm more likely, if it's surrounded by residential first, I'm not gonna agree with putting a helipad in the middle of them. But if it's new, then the disclosure statement makes sense because if there's new residential, they moved in there first. Meaning, does that make sense? And that disclosure sta, statement does make sense because then if they come back, because like in Andrew's case, um, they're putting theirs in an area where he was there first. So that disclosure statement makes sense. Does that make sense, PJ?
It does. I just don't know if it's, uh, how much you want our department to be involved in that.
Right. That should be a case-by-case, case-by-case basis.
And it could be put on as a, and same with, it could be a stipulation that goes on there just so it's recognized in ours that that could happen. If you do, the county should require disclosure statements for new residential.
Could put the county could require as opposed to should require.
Right.
Or may.
May require.
May require.
It makes sense because
I like may.
then it would work in this case that if you went into this area, you could make this person, like I said, if, who was there first is who I kinda do stuff with, anything I do is...
Right. I like that. I like the county may require disclosure statements.
For new residential development. 'Cause the, the old ones were there first, so they shouldn't have to do a disclosure statement at that point.
The question would be, how far?
I wanna say just on the may or could or should or whatever, um, like the purpose of this comprehensive plan isn't it more to say what the county should do rather than what it's allowed to or what we think it should do or? It seems to me that should probably makes more sense here than may. 'Cause is there anywhere else in here that's saying, well, the county could do this, but they don't have to do that, you know?
No, it's either, it's either shalls or shoulds.
Shalls or shoulds, right? You're right, so...
We'd be kinda breaking form with...
And isn't all this trying to say is if, if a developer's coming into an area that they're gonna have to say, we know that there's an airport or a heliport right over there so that they're liable in a way to tell those, um, buyers of these resi, residential properties? Right, isn't that the point? So, I mean, that's, that's not really a big deal to say you're within. And then the question you just said, the question then is, you know, how far away?
So, yeah, the comp plan is giving you direction. It's the zoning ordinance that actually will drive it.
I'm gonna ask a question and maybe it's, you know, maybe it's not appro, no, I'm not gonna say appropriate, but maybe it's not in line with this and maybe I can help me understand it. All of these businesses that we have in the county, let's just say railroad or any of these businesses that already make a lot of noise, anytime somebody moves into those areas and they start complaining, have we had any successful shutdowns of those businesses for the complaint? 'Cause usually an established business has that reversed and anybody who moves in afterwards. I'm just wondering if we're making a mountain out of a molehill. I, I mean, I, I understand Andrew's concern, but if, if you've got capital investment, if you've got a business that is a known noise business, are we making more work on the county if we're trying to put all this extra notifications out there? I thi, I think in a case-by-case scenario, we, we might be wise to do that from the board of commissioners' side of things. But in general, making a policy across the board, because then, then you expand it to potentially say, well, if you're building near a railroad hub, if you're building near, you know, the, the gun range or any of those types of things, then you open yourselves up to say, well, y'all didn't put a, a notice of noise or whatever and that, or nuisance in that area.
Fire department.
Fire department. They come out with their, their lights and sirens whenever it goes into a new community or outside of a community. I, I'm just, I'm, I'm hearing all this and I, and I get it 'cause I'm sitting there thinking it's a good idea to make these disclosures. But what's the purpose of these disclosures? I mean, and how much does the county need to spend time on it? Because what I see, and this, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, PJ, I see a lot more work coming your way if we do something like this.
Or requests for cash.
Or requests for cash. And is that, is that what we're, is that what we should be setting up for the county or, and, and for the residents? Do we, do we say, look, it's, you know, yeah, it's gonna be case-by-case scenario? We even, regardless of what our zoning ordinance is and what the comp plan is, if somebody doesn't like the heliport there, they can still file a lawsuit. There's nothing that we can do to stop that if they don't like it. But then they would, then the courts would say, well, we disagree with you. It was there first, you moved in and tough.
I think we should stick to the airport and Ellsworth.
Because those contours already exist.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just throwing that out there. I'm just wondering if we're working too much on something that...
On one hand, you have contours. On the other hand, you have the recommendation where it's just proximity. Proximity's not gonna require a lot of money to study. You just come up with a, a distance, right?
Are you talking about the airport?
Just in general, the, you know, any FAA-recognized airport or heliport, you would just have to go by distance, not contours.
On private property or commercial property you're talking?
I'm, I'm reading according to the recommendation, how it should read. FAA-recognized airports or heliports. If you went with that recommendation, then it would be based on distance, not on contours 'cause contours haven't been studied on every...
And what would the distance be and how would you figure it out?
Right. But
I know, I mean...
that's not, you're right, we'd figure that out.
Right. See, that's why I'm, I'm seeing a big problem with all of this for the county and that's why I'm like, ugh, this is...
My thing is, is I, I think it's a, a good idea. I don't think it's something that we should be doing because right now it's, okay, helicopter, commercial business. Well, what about the next thing's gonna be, you know, what is the next request gonna ask? Or what's the next use in the county that's gonna make noise is gonna request the same type of treatment?
So we just take out five-two, so, 'cause it says adjacent to airport noise, within or adjacent to airport noise contours? 'Cause we can't tell if there, that space there, then how far do we go out then? 'Cause those planes can, depends how low they fly. There could be some issues there, so... Um, what I'm saying is there's a judgment there as well as the judgment what we're talking about.
In five-two...
And maybe it needs to be noise contours and not, 'cause you could have decimal levels in the county that we've had ACDC converters, we've had probably railroads, we've had, um, heliports. I mean, how do you address it then?
Well, I think, I think we're trying to rebuild the wheel here. I mean, there has to have been other communities, counties, et cetera, that have addressed this problem, come up with a solution for the problem. Because it, it appears to me as if we're kind of randomly hitting, missing, coming up with
Well...
various types of things. And I would think, you know, the man that wrote this in the first place, I mean, I'm assuming that he has addressed this issue.
Well, it says military bases and commercial aviation, so we're not addressing trains and stuff right now, by the way, guys. Then we're not addressing AC, DC converters now to get back on subject. Yeah. It's about noise contours, which, again, I think we should put the residential... I think we should do something for protection 'cause otherwise we just keep coming back on it. And then the next board, once we approve something, could change everything that we just did if there wasn't a disclosure beforehand. It makes sense. That are taking out businesses because of, because of it.
I, I think based on, um, the way PJ responded to my question, so even if we did what the recommendation asks, all airports and heliports, it's gonna cause a lot of extra work, trying to figure that out and then lead to other similar situations. So maybe the recommendation here doesn't work, just doesn't work. So then the question is, the way it's written, is that okay? Is that consistent with the way it is currently? Do you already have any requirements for disclosures near the airports?
For the airport, um, we do, but it's mainly for a construction of a structure. Oops, that's the ACOUs one. It's FAA part seventy-seven and it just goes deeper and deeper into that. This is basically what we created for anybody who builds within that blue area or inside around the regional airport. And it's basically our acknowledgement and our responsibility as a county is to let somebody know that you are in a dangerous area. Um, and FAA notices, notices that. And any structure you put up cannot affect the flight pattern, the radio signals or anything. It's this document and this chapter from the FAA really puts it on the landowner to be the one responsible.
But it doesn't say that on here.
Well, so since this already exists, then the way that five-point-two is currently written wouldn't add any really additional work or issues, would it?
Well, the regional airport's not based, the area's not based on noise contours. It's on flight zones and delta airspace and
Okay, so we still have an...
conical zones.
So we still have an issue with the use of noise contours?
Unless regi, unless the regional airport has them, which I'm sure they probably do, they're just not on Rapid Map for us to look at. If they had the noise contours, we could use, we could do that. Talking about a lot of the valley.
And what you're showing us here, that's just for Ellsworth?
Nope, that's just for the regional airport. Nope, that's just for the regional airport. So Ellsworth is noise contours. Regional airport is airspace.
So couldn't you put the county should require disclosure statements for any new residential development within or adjacent to FAA, FAA noise contours? And then they'd have to prove that they're noise contours.
Or add to that, or what was that airspace?
Yeah, it has a lot of, there's a lot of different names to it. Um, if you look here.
Why are you looking at it?
These are all the different colors, what, what they represent. And this even goes into more specifics after this. It's not real language that we use too often.
Deb, who would have to prove the noise contours?
If they didn't want to do a disclosure statement?
Who's they?
The residents, the new residents. They would say they didn't have a problem. There wouldn't be any noise contours at their resident. Why would they sign a disclosure?
That's for, that's for new residents, what, when they sell the home.
Then you'd have to.
And it'd be on the landowner.
Hopefully.
The landowner to let the next landowner know. That's usually where it gets lost.
Yeah, usually is where it gets lost. I'm not going to tell you all the negatives about my home.
Well, they never.
Cause I want to sell it.
But they never do. But at least the one that was building it there in the first place that started it and who was there first again? And then you bought a home and you already knew that there was a heliport there and then someone already that owned this house signed the disclosure. Because you bought the house and you didn't recognize there was a heliport, at least the new residence. Meaning if something's already there, I think you guys think it's okay.
Again, that, that's the type of stuff that could be addressed in the zoning ordinance. Determine how you want to word it for here for direction.
But I think a lot of this stuff in this book could be addressed in some of the zoning ordinance and not comprehensive plan, but.
Right.
When we read residential development, in my mind, that I thought that means something new, new development, or am I wrong about that? Cause you're saying if somebody sells a house, is that also when this disclosure would be required?
No, I had just brought up because it was recommended that disclosure only be when the, when there's new.
Playing devil's advocate.
Sorry.
Just playing devil's advocate.
Okay.
Just the things that we experience every day.
Right, but when we were reading this.
Everything gets lost from one buyer to the next.
You're saying the opposite of what you're saying. I mean, the same thing, but someone that's already in the airspace. And in that blue circle, do they, do they have to sign the, once they move?
Nope.
So then.
Unless a new buyer cut.
That's what I'm saying.
They're slightly different than what's required. So like if somebody wanted to come in and build a shed in that blue space, they still have to sign off on that FAA document.
But if they sell the property and they don't even know that someone sold the disclosure, it's the same thing what you're telling us on these other ones.
Uh, uh, unless they come to our department, unless the buyer or the realtor come to our department and ask for documents, it would not be a registered deed.
That's what I said. It's not relevant then.
And my question was, when we say residential development, for any residential development, are we just talking about just new stuff or not?
I read it as new.
New only. So the whole topic of, oh, I sell my house and that's irrelevant, right? Or what, or should it be?
It is re- irrelevant.
Okay. So we're only talking about new construction, new development, not buying and selling.
That's what I was saying.
Okay.
On the first, well, when I was saying my part, same thing. And then it happens in the same way that we just explained how we were doing, what we're doing in the first place with the new residential within adjacent. Will happen the same way of what you're talking about PJ. Once they sell the house, they don't have the disclosure either and you've already had them do a. So it's not going to work either way.
I guess the key is what, the disclosure statement, that's the key for this, for the sentence. So disclosure statement is yes, it's going to be loud. I acknowledge that. It's basically that simple. That is different than this document. This is not a disclosure statement.
Right.
Okay.
So just make sure there's, so you know that there's, there's a difference.
I see.
So what's the, what's the county should require disclosure statements then?
So basically what this statement is asking, or is, or this goal is basically saying is what we do for Ellsworth, for the noise contours, which is that document right here.
Yep.
Should also be done for the regional airport on top of the FAA requirements.
Regional airport in Rapid City?
Yeah, cause this is not an FAA requirement. This was an agreement between Ellsworth, Mead County, Pennington County, Box Elder and Rapid City. After the joint land use study that basically went through and say, okay, when people are going to develop in this area, let them know. That's something that there may be, might be allowed. And that we will adjust development in that area accordingly. But again, it doesn't really affect us that much as far as the base is concerned. But then what this would do is add that same type of overlay over the regional airport now.
Maybe we could put a question mark and have more discussion, move on.
Yeah. All right. So that whole section eighty-five, more discussion on that later.
Now see what, see what your planners and stuff think. Maybe someone has a, maybe we can look at it again.
I think only eighty, eighty-five, eighty-five two. Uh, eighty-five or the, the next one down, thirty-eight doesn't need any discussion.
It does not? Did I hear you correctly?
I don't think it needs any discussion, eighty, uh, number thirty-eight.
Okay.
But obviously we, we got issues with.
That was Sandy's comment.
Thirty-seven.
Which is all tied up with what we're already discussing right now, which would tie into further discussion.
Right.
So, all right.
Not doing any, so thirty-seven, we're going to come back to next meeting.
Yeah, we'll have to come back to thirty-seven. Thirty-eight kind of ties in with that. I believe that should come back.
Okay.
All right. Well, that was a pretty healthy discussion. It's already eleven. Let's see, five-one. That's just the error.
Here it comes again.
Any, any concerns with item thirty-nine?
No.
I'm okay with that one.
Processing is fine.
Yeah. Item forty.
I agree.
See, this is kind of where that crossover on that, when we were talking about value added and then here. So we agree with forty then?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Yes.
Forty-one.
Staff's concerned about the word fast track.
I don't get that either.
I mean.
We should fast track everything if that's what we're talking about.
Well, it means overlook things. Uh, that's what I would read it as.
Wouldn't say overlook. I think she just, you know, she thinks it's a positive to the process, the value of processing facilities. And that she wants us to be cognizant that that is something that should move forward quickly. In a sense that, that doesn't mean you forget any laws or.
No, to me it means that we're basically giving them precedence.
Precedence, preference.
Um, and we're leapfrogging somebody else that was already in line. And I'm not in agreement with that.
No, I think it should.
I don't, I don't think they're leapfrogging.
Should stay as written.
I don't think they're leapfrogging, but if something, I mean, you should, if someone's going to come in with this huge facility or something that, um. There should be some special attention to it because that's something for the county that's an economic driver. That doesn't mean you disclude anybody else that's in the process.
What would accelerated development mean?
What it, what, what's fa- fast tracking mean?
Well, in, as it's written, it says accelerated development.
How does that differ from fast track?
Right. Is there something the county can do to accelerate development?
Well.
You can make it a priority and, and that kind of thing, but I don't think, and I would hope that you never discount or not follow the rules to get there.
Right.
We've done it in the city, but we followed the rules to get there, to make something happen that we thought that would be positive for, um, Rapid City. What would be different than that here?
I don't necessarily think this even needs to be in the comprehensive plan because I think that if we have some, a situation like that, it's going to be common sense. That we're going to pay close attention to it and move forward with it as quickly as possible. I, I don't think we have to say that. I mean, sometimes we gotta defer to the common sense of PJ and his staff. So I, I, I don't, I don't think it needs to even be there.
What is accelerated development?
Look, this came up at a comment at, in one of the wall meetings, well, the only wall meeting that I came at because there was a concern that there's all these different, you know, these ag uses, but nowhere really to process anything. And it was more of a comment from a couple of people sitting across the table of a rendering plant for cows. There isn't one. And if there is going to be one, it needs to be done quickly so people can take advantage of it. So again, this comp plan is based on a lot of what, what the public said. But, um, I agree with Commissioner DeSando, this is, it's going to be handled when it comes in, we're just going to take care of it anyway. Not necessarily any faster or slower than anything else.
So the planning department, this man put this stuff, even though it didn't, it was from the public that we just put in so they could come in and not, this is not really the plan. It's a plan that the public put in and then we just added their comments with it. And we thought it would be a good idea in this concept, comprehensive plan.
What he does is he takes their ideas and generalizes them.
Even if they're not good ideas?
Hmm?
Even if they're not good ideas?
No, the way he has it is not necessarily a bad or good idea. He's just, he puts it in here for our discussion of whether, do you want to promote that type of development? Or not? And he used the words accelerate and that's, that's his professional choice.
Is, didn't we pay him to do what would be appropriate for Pennington County?
Oh, he did, yeah.
And maybe what he should put is appropriate for Pennington County that, because he does this for a living. And then put the comments below that could be added to it instead of adding the comments and us taking them out. It doesn't make sense to me. That's what I'm saying. So it seemed more appropriate if you were doing, if that's what you did for a living, you put what's appropriate. And then put any comment below that people may be said.
Well, that's what this is for, cause this is continuously being generated.
Yeah, but we can't explain accelerated development. We couldn't.
Yeah, but this is specifically talking about food processing industries? I mean, as, as you suggested, any type of industry that would come into the county that would have a major economic impact, people would pay attention. And so I, I don't think this statement ought to even, should, I believe it should be deleted. AG one point three.
Me too.
Under five point two.
Could be put differently. I don't know if it should be taken out that we support and would try to, however you say.
I mean, we support development of high value added food processing, but I don't see accelerated needing to be in there.
If we, if we start down that line where we're at telling, saying we're going to support different industries specifically, we're going to have forty-five pages.
Exactly.
We, we support this industry, we support that.
Yes.
Mining, I can see mining. I can see all of them coming in there.
This doesn't need to be there. And in my opinion, I mean, I'm, that's just my opinion.
I think the point is generally stated elsewhere probably, right? Do we need to call it out again more specifically? Maybe the one point three should be taken out.
We can't worry about hurting people's feelings.
I don't worry about hurting their feelings. I just want to make sure if, if we're specifically saying about Rapid City Regional Airport and we're specifically saying. Ellsworth Air Force Base. That we support high valued, whatever. I, this, this plan.
Well, saying we support high value added food processing industries is, I'm okay with that. I'm not, I'm, I'm not okay with the accelerated because it looks that we look at them differently. As opposed to any other business that would come in and say, hey, I want to do a egg processing plant or I want to do a, a meat processing plant or something. Well, then they're like, well, how come we're not accelerated?
Change the word accelerated to the in both cases.
The county should support the development of high value food processing industries.
But then that brings up the question of what do you mean by support?
The normal permitting process.
I'm just putting options out there. I'm not saying I agree with them. I'm just.
But a- as we stated, then wouldn't we support all of these other industries? I mean, why are we specifically talking about food processing? I don't think that statement needs to be in there.
I have an X on one point three. I personally think it should all come out, but.
Again, this is interviews, public meetings. That's why this is, he's reflecting all the information he got over two years.
Yeah, that's okay.
And this is where we determine whether we like it or not.
Can I get an agree, can we get an agreement to get rid of AG one point three?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Already wrote delete.
You already wrote delete on there.
I, I think when it comes to editing in general and things like this, you start with as much as you can and then trimming it down is a good thing. If it's redundant, I mean, the point is already, like the comprehensive plan is all about supporting economic development. We don't need to call it out like that.
Any other input on page five point two, five point three?
What about one point four?
Uh, one point four.
It's not, it's not in our list, but.
Okay.
Page five-three?
Page five-three, ag one point four?
Cause this looks a bit similar to, um, one point three.
County shall direct urban development away from valuable agricultural lands to cities and unincorporated communities where public facilities and infrastructure are available.
What does that mean?
That's what I said. That's what I looked at it. We're going to tell you, you shall, and we shall direct your urban, and we're going to tell PJ that as commissioners or planning commissioners?
Nope, I don't like that. Anybody have a problem deleting one point four?
No.
I don't think it's valuable.
I think it's wrong.
No, go ahead. Delete one point four.
Is that all right for us to make edits outside of what's in our comments sheet?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Do whatever you gotta do.
Yep.
Any other thoughts on five-three, five-two, five-three? If not, takes us to five-four, ag two point one. What's the requested, what's the specifics in that change?
What is bill six?
Yeah.
I think what they're saying is that bill six, is what Nancy or Kathy was saying is it doesn't, uh, I think she said something about the test of time. Stand the test of time, probably because Senate Bill sixty-six could change.
Can you tell us what bill sixty-six is?
Uh, I'd have to look it up for you here.
And from what year? Cause it all depends on what year.
Well, that's what I'm thinking is that's probably what Kathy's getting at is don't mention that specific.
Right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'm sure it's going to be different. So this was two thousand seventeen?
I'd say the current, yep.
I think that's just a bill that says that you, that if you create the repair and buffer strip, that you're not.
I was able to find it.
Nevermind.
Dave, you're right on there though.
She basically says bill six, six does not stand the test of time. Statements should refer to the objective of Senate bill rather than a specific bill number from a previous legislative session.
Right, because it could be edited. All the wording can eventually be.
Encouraging property owners a tax. So the county should consider encouraging. Property owners a tax incentive for creating repairing buffer strips if the property joins one of the eligible lakes or streams.
Yep.
We already do that through grants, don't we?
Uh, through the process, but I don't think we're involved in that anymore.
You don't, but y'all don't do tax incentives for that, for those buffers?
I don't know about that.
That's tax incentives for the buffer zone.
I don't think the county has anything to do with tax incentives. So that's why it says, calls out this bill, but the bill might end, so.
Right.
If we just cross out the reference to that, I think the statement still does what we're looking to do.
County could encourage tax incentives?
No.
No, no, don't add tax incentives.
Consider.
Well, what do y'all want to say?
Property owners a tax incentive. Nope, I say we take it out.
Just take it out completely? Ag two point one?
Out.
Okay. Anybody, anybody have an issue with that?
Does this mean it passed?
I don't know. Uh, I can't see. First read in the Senate. All is signed by.
Oh, signed by, signed by the governor. Yep, there it is. Oh, I was looking that it went down. Okay.
It could get thrown out in a year.
Yeah, it could be changed.
For the taxation therefore.
Okay, that's what I looked up twenty seventeen. Thanks.
Yeah, I see it could always be edited. It can, I mean, it could be changed. All right. So we're taking two point one out? Is that what I got from our conversation?
Yes.
I agree.
All right. Item number forty-three, two point two.
I agree. That should stay there.
Stays. There is a rewording. Did you see the rewording by Kathy?
Remember Leon?
Uh, forty-three.
He adds on private hand? He adds on private hand, on private land?
It's not o- only on, uh, Forest Service land, that's why.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So.
No, I don't agree with, on private land.
Yep.
Anybody else have any input?
I think it could just stay as written.
Stay as written. Okay. Anybody got any other input on that?
Hold on a second here, I'm trying to make sense of what's. Because is the comment saying that, what can the county do about what happens on timber productions happening on U S Forest Service? So what's the county gonna do about that?
The county should.
Ensure that high impact processes have low impacts on surrounding land uses, how?
Depends if it's private or even forest land, we can say stuff, if it's impacting people, like when they take all the timber off and all their drainage comes on to private land or people, I mean.
So we tell the Forest Service something?
I would hope they know how to do their job, so we would just inform them that we're having some impacts from them.
Erosion or whatnot.
So if we had an issue with activity on Forest Service land, the county should do something about it?
If it's, um, to do with residential, if, because it says on there, surrounding
Well, such as residential.
land uses. Because they could clear something off and then impact some of our county roads as well, so. You know what I'm saying, by their timber, how much timber they're taking off, or loss.
Erosion, you could create.
I'd say at the very least, such as residential land uses could be scratched, because we don't have to call out just that when it's such as, because it could be anything.
Put period after land uses.
But I'm still unsure of what the county is able to do or should do in that situation, other than to complain to the Forest Service.
Actually, we've worked with our environmental, um, guy through the Scott Guffey that has helped us many times on different things with forest and
Right.
Forest service issues, and, um, so I think if, that we should ensure that high impact ag, such as timber productions, have low impacts on surrounding sensitive land. I think we do that already. Does that make sense? So why not put it in a comprehensive plan?
As the comment states, the county should work with the Forest Service to define concerns.
Which we do.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Are we taking out the such as residential land uses, is that what you guys wanna do?
I think that's, doesn't need to be in there at all.
I'll agree.
I'm good with that.
Moving it?
Yeah.
Just that, just that last bit of the paragraph? But keep the rest as is?
Okay.
And should we say ensure, should the county ensure these things, or as Matrix comment is?
I don't think we can ensure.
Reword as work with, work with the Forest Service? To define concerns? Using the word ensure doesn't really say anything, does it?
I think ensure can, can be applied to private lands, but ensure cannot be appri- applied to federal land. We don't have that kind of control.
Well, if we change the word ensure to what, um, the comment response is here, should work with, to define concerns, then, then could it apply to any kind of land use? Because we're just saying, well, we have concerns, if this kind of activity's happening, we're gonna have erosion. Doesn't matter what kind of land use it is. So perhaps we should say, the county should
Work with.
Work with U S F S to define concerns the county would like addressed with new permits or permanent renewals, as written in the response to the comment.
I'd say keep the high impact or the agricultural process to do it timber in there, not define it as U S, just U S G S, because we have it on private land too.
So, high impact sounds intuitive, but what is high impact, who defines that?
No, the county should work with agricultural processes such as timber production on surrounding sensitive land uses.
Yeah, I think, I think this, these, the comment, or as it's written, plus the response, kinda needs to be merged together in a way.
What do you got for us?
The county should work with U S Forest Service to define concerns regarding agricultural processes? We have another such as in here, such as timber production, but timber production's not the only potentially high impact, or is it?
That's just giving an example.
Like Kathy's saying, a lot of it happens on U S land, on public domain, but not all of it.
Mm-hmm.
So is that the only one we're gonna be concerned about?
Well, and.
I mean, we do work with them anyway, I mean, there's not much we can do on Forest Service land unless they invite us to help them. And that's usually with septic stuff.
I think the key is high impact, because the county should work with high impact, because the low impact aren't gonna, not gonna be really our concern, as much as a high impact agricultural processes, such as timber production.
And we would define that in the zoning ordinance.
We'd have to say high impact includes these things, and.
I don't think you need to define high impact, what would be high impact is something that would be disturbing those lands or something. That's usually a high impact of something, if something has low impact, a lot of times people.
You don't even know what's going on.
Right.
I'd like, if Kathy was here, to, to look at this one, should we revisit it in the next meeting?
Yep.
Put a question mark on it, PJ.
Forty-three?
Yep.
A two dash two.
Do what?
Ag dash two dash two is basically what you're going through.
Yep, yep. Anything else on that one, before we move into chapter six?
No.
The last chapter, hopefully? Alright, six point one, anything on page six point one, there's nothing on our comments. Six point two is just a, um, a change that's been requested, and looks like it's gonna be made, since it's just an edit to it. Anybody have any problems with that?
I'd like to know why. Why should it be maintained by South Dakota, South Dakota game fishing parks, rather than the Forest Service?
Well, isn't it, and that, who maintains it already?
I think it is already.
That's who maintains it currently.
The South Dakota fishing?
I believe so.
Really?
I think, I think they just put in there, the, um, I think they thought the Forest Service did. Whenever he wrote this.
When we have property requests or something going on near the Mickelson Trail, we send it to game and fish.
Oh, okay, one.
Game fishing parks. Yeah. So he, whenever he was drafting, he probably just thought it was Forest Department, so he put in there, so just making the edit.
Okay.
So forty-four is a, what?
Leave it.
Leave it. As, you know, requested change. Um, forty-five, six nine, or anything between six nine, or six two and six nine?
Page six two. Okay, there you go.
No, was it just maps and things?
Yeah. Six nine, T C one point five.
I would agree with that, reword as follows.
You agree with the reword? Oh, yeah.
I agree.
So forty-five was a yes?
Everybody else agree?
That's okay.
Okay. Anything between six nine, well, six ten, uh, T C two?
I don't believe that that should be in, I mean, I think bike paths are
Crucial.
Fantastic for the community.
Anything we can rate to add on to the cities, or anybody else that have bike paths as a county?
Sandy? Since it was yours, how about you?
I know, but I mean, bike paths in all of Pennington County, I mean, that seems an, an absurd goal to
Well, right now.
to implement.
Right now, they're looking at, um, extending the bike path all the way to scenic.
Oh my goodness.
To the city of scenic. And, but I, but and, and I think if you look back at the discussion we had about that, about six months, seven months ago, I suggested that if it's going to be done, that they do fundraisers and that the public pays for it.
Yeah.
But, um, but I think that, that, you know, as far as within the city limits.
Yeah, but within the city limits, you already have your bike paths, and you have your
Right.
plans for bike paths, and, you know, uh, in my experience, when I see people in building permits or whatever, in an obscure location, then the county could say, that's great, however, even though there's nothing on either side of you, we want you to have a sidewalk, we want you to have a bike path, we want you to have, you know, for your linear footage, even though nobody on either side, you know, to me, it imposes.
It doesn't say bike path on there, though.
Path is kinda specific, it says bike, bicycle route, which is a bit different.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, what?
Well, bike path isn't specifically called out in here, as far as I'm seeing.
About a bicycle route connecting the Black Hills National Forest to the Badlands National Park and Buffalo Gap National Grassland.
Don't know if that would require any kind of development, it could just be saying, here's the route. So when tourists come here and they wanna know the best way to ride, saying, I'll take this road. Otherwise, I agree with you. Creating specific paths would be pretty big.
It's just a route, rather than actually building a whole, it's just designating a route.
Right.
This is designating a route.
D O T, you can also put it on the side of the road where they buy, do bigger, you already know
The margins.
shoulders, yeah.
Shoulders.
For bikes. For people, because there's a lot of people that do bike along ways with their packs and all that, and that's a well-traveled, if you look, it's a well-traveled area.
Would it be better to utilize the word, um, not create, but, um,
Establish?
Establish, develop, um, you know, you.
Establish is pretty finite.
I think create, create means, creates good, because it means most of those. You can establish, when you create something, you can establish something, or you can.
Yeah, but create, somebody could take that and be like, oh, that means construction.
Establish does too.
No, establish a route is, there's already many routes, but we, here's our designated, designate a route, that's the word I'm looking for.
We're gonna designate one?
Designate what's, yeah, because there's already many different routes that way.
But, um, then develop would be like an ongoing thing, as opposed to establish, like, as after, what you were gonna say, PJ? Establish means we've done it, but it develop means we continue to do it.
Yeah, because if you use establish or create, that's pretty finite, that's a direction for us to do.
Yep.
Designate and develop, which one of these would make most sense?
How about encourage?
Again, this is the comp plan, it's very general, the specifics occur in the zoning ordinance.
I like designate, develop works too, though.
You get the county should work with the South Dakota D O T, should. They should?
They could.
We do.
Should and shall are the, are the terms used throughout this.
That's what I'm saying, so we should work with, and then to establish, because once you said should, you pretty much said the word. Yeah, you're in.
I, I, I think we should, frankly.
Yeah, I, I, my only thought is, once you tell somebody, well, here's a bicycle route, but it isn't established, and they get hit by a cow or something.
I think create is fine.
Well, whatever.
Guys, we could pick the words apart, I think create is fine.
Yeah.
I think we're good, we're starting to pick a word. The bottom line is, we, we believe it's a good idea.
It's a good idea.
Yeah.
As long as create isn't confused with build.
That's, that's exactly what I thought one time.
That's, that's where this started.
Because that's the, Sandy's concern of money.
You said kinda.
Well, I can tell you that, when they built the bike path from Spokane, Washington to Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, to twenty-seven mile bike path,
I like designate.
it created a lot of revenue.
They charged people to ride on it?
And economic development, no. People established businesses along the bike trail, catering to the bicyclists.
Oh my goodness.
Okay, guys.
Then paid property taxes and sales taxes.
So what do we, so are we changing the word, or what are we doing?
We're leaving it for now, and then if somebody wants to come and pick apart create later on, they could create a different word besides what we just said.
Sunny, you and I will leave that charge.
Make a different word.
Sunny, you and I will leave that charge whenever the, no, I'm just kidding.
I'm fine either way.
Alright.
I like designate, but.
So what are we doing with forty-seven?
Leaving it as it's currently worded for two point, um,
Okay.
one.
Around forty-seven.
With Sunny and I saying that we like the word designate.
Forty-six, you mean?
You wanna come back to it then?
Yeah, we'll end up coming back to it.
Forty-six, it was.
That was item forty-six.
Forty-six, yeah.
I mean, we don't have to come back to it, it'll be something that I'm sure we'll talk about.
Somebody can talk about that later.
Item forty-seven, we have three items left, uh, six ten.
Wait.
That's the same thing you guys were just talking about.
Oh, yeah.
So that's what I was asking about.
It's to a bike trail.
Let's come back to both?
Do you like the word should, do y'all want the word should staying there?
I think we're good.
Good on that one, that one can stay as. Uh, wait, actually, no, they're saying to change it, to the county should examine the feasibility of a long-term project. Totally, totally missed that.
We're coming back to, we're coming back.
Yeah, we're coming back to it. Yeah, we're coming back to it.
examine the feasibility of, that sounds good.
Yeah, we're coming back to that.
That's forty-seven.
Right, well, it's part of that, what we just were talking about, so.
And the same thing on six ten two two.
Yeah, do we wanna come back to that one? Since it's kind of in line with what she was saying? Maybe with Kathy here, we can kinda get some synced clarity?
If we say the feels, the feasibility of, then we're starting all over again.
Right. May, maybe we just wait till Kathy's here and kinda get clarification feasibility and move on from that one today?
Yeah, she likes what we said.
I know.
Six eleven?
Yeah, six eleven. Six eleven, T C five one.
So this came up because of the cell tower that was gonna be built on the way out to, what was that, what was that? The verges. Yeah, forty-four, yep. So it came up, um, there was a debate years ago about whether it was a scenic highway or not, or a byway. And I know that that was pursued, but ultimately failed. But there was a request for certain types of development to be curtailed or restricted along those type of byways or highways. So Matrix went through and came up with some of what they would consider, if you wanted to do that, what those routes could be, and that's what those maps show. But five point one just kind of explains the goal.
I think that's a good idea. That way, if we, if, kinda like this comprehensive plan, it's what we think that may be good for the future of the county, before we decide to put designated stuff along it that don't really fit the future land use, or what we think is compatible with what's going on moving forward. Fortunately, it's designated, I'll keep saying this, by, who buys the land? And what's changed, but if we think that, just in case it should be that way, it might be easier to promote it in the future.
So what Kathy's doing is just making a recommendation, a wordage change.
Right.
Will include the following.
Yeah, hers is, this may include the following, so there you goes that.
Well, we just said that we shouldn't use may, maybe we should say should, it should include the following.
Well, in this particular instance, I think may, because you may not have all of those in that particular area, that's, that's what this, that, you know, this, you know, this will include the following, well, what if you don't have this particular aspect of it there, it won't necessarily include that, but it may include it.
Yeah, that makes sense.
That's a little bit. That's a little bit different than the shoulds and the shalls from, in, at the beginning, you see?
Yeah, I get it.
Where are you guys talking?
Instead of will, may.
This will include the following.
Better word.
Yeah, I think may is better in that particular.
Kids are funny.
I'm okay with that change, is it?
Oh, Gary Lee.
Less authoritative.
That's less authoritative.
It will.
I know, cause then the county's like, well, then we have to go develop stuff there that's not there.
Tell me to change your word.
Any, anything further for? Six-
I hate to say this, but yes.
There is? Alright, what do you got?
It's just a point of clar- clarification, and no, I didn't submit it for the Matrix.
That's okay.
But just please look on page six dash ten. Goal TC four dot one. What is a wayfinding signage program, what is that?
It's basically like when you're walking the, the, uh, Centennial Trail.
Yeah.
Little signs that tell you which way you should be going. Or signage of some sort that's directing you as to where you should be going.
Assuming your GPS dies.
Kind like the DOT has on highways.
I'm, I'm sorry, what? I can't.
I'm like DOT.
My glasses.
I love it.
That's too funny. That's awesome.
You got your glasses on, right?
Now you can hear.
Okay.
Basically, what the DOT does on highways, they do it on wayfinding on programs, or basically finding your way to where you need to go. Our wayfinding programs, or wayfinding signs, or wayfinding-
Okay, not to be confused with billboards.
Those are wayfinding.
Well.
You know, have you been to Yellowstone?
Not in the past sixty-two years.
Well, everywhere you go in Yellowstone, it, you, you'll, there's little signs that say-
Could be.
Uh, Sunlit Basin. This direction. Melting Pot, this direction.
You have, guys, you have different colors, the green is for like interstate, brown is for parks, blue for airports or-
Well, it says both, but it says with, upon the overall aesthetics of the county, so depends if you think billboards are aesthetically pleasing or not.
It helps those that don't live here get around a little better.
The tourists.
I understand, period. I like billboards, but anyway.
A few more for like attractions and-
So, is it okay for you right now?
Yeah, it's okay.
Are we done?
Well, no, 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 we're not quite done, we got, we, well, we're done if there's no other inputs on that one. And if there's no other inputs, there would be a motion that we accept all the changes that we made today.
I would make a motion that we accept the changes that the planning commission made today.
I second that.
Any discussion? Motion and second, any discussion, seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all oppose no? Motion carries.
Your next one, motion would be to continue ordinance amendment nineteen oh one to the March twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen planning commission meeting to consider amendment slash adoption.
What he said.
I wouldn't, you'd make that motion, Deb? Deb motions? We have to continue it so we can continue to go through it, since we didn't complete going all the way through it.
Second that motion.
Does this mean going through seven, eight, and nine?
Well, seven, eight, nine, if we make it through ten, wherever, wherever we go. But it, our goal has been three chapters each meeting, if we don't meet that goal, or if we exceed that goal, it's acceptable. We haven't put those numbers out there to the public, so we're not mandated.
You have glasses on?
I know, that makes no sense.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all oppose no? Motion carries. Alright, that takes us now to the item number fourteen.
Yep, county board report. The board of commissioners concur with the planning commission's recommendation from the February twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen meeting, with the exception of rezone eighteen eleven and comprehensive plan amendment eighteen-ten to rezone twenty-nine point oh-two acres from general agriculture district to low-density residential district, Shriner Investment, and Shane Shriner is the landowner. The board approved rezone eighteen eleven with the condition that a warranty deed get registered with the register of deeds, and the comprehensive plan amendment was denied. Staff has some concerns about the way the motion was made, and we're still looking into that. Um, but I know we have to come back and hear it anyway at the board level, so.
Okay.
Um, next item, the second reading of rezone eighteen twelve and comprehensive plan amendment eighteen eleven for Borghlin Historic Center Incorporated, Dwayne Penkratz, Ken Nash is the agent, was denied without prejudice and to come back and request highway service zoning, which the applicant has done. Last item, the appeal of conditional use permit review seventeen thirty for Daniel Johnson High Mark Properties LLC to allow a multifamily residence to be used as a vacation home rental was approved to grant seventeen thirty for the multifamily residence to be used as a vacation home rental for one year.
Any questions on those items? Alright. Items from the public, I don't see anyone from the public, so item sixteen.
Okay, items from staff, so the first item is building permit report. Uh, so this is for two thousand and eighteen, nineteen, and the month would be February, not much to show really, we're down fifty-one percent over this time last year, probably attributed to the weather. So we expect it to start going up as soon as things start warming off, warming up. Uh, there was a fifty percent increase in non-residential additions, sheds, um, things like that on properties, non- detached garages, stuff like that. Uh, but overall, we're down fifty-one percent over this time last year. Uh, we took in forty-seven permits so far this year, and there was, we were at ninety-six at the end of February. And valuation, uh, was down twelve percent, but as far as average cost of permits, we're up over eighty percent. Not much to report on that one, really.
Alright, any questions on that item? B, mailings.
Yep, so the next item, uh, for those that don't know, what we do when, and after staff reports are done, the agenda is done, is a copy of the staff report and a copy of the agenda are mailed to everybody that is listed on the applications. So for one item, you could have three different people that were mailing everything to. Um, it's been, it's taken a lot of time, it's become quite costly. Um, so what we are looking to do is just, uh, we're still gonna mail out the agendas, and they'll actually be able to get those earlier. Um, but not include the copy, the full copy of the staff reports, as you know, some of these can be quite thick. Um, but with a, a draft letter or a template that directs them to the website where they can see in color the entire document and their entire staff report. So, we're looking at saving, um, staff time, county money, and then also directing them to where the most complete information can be found. However, they do have an opportunity to request that they get a paper copy, but they do that prior to, what was that, Jerry, I'm sorry? That they request prior to Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday at five. So we can get it to them. And we can get it to them through mailing or email. Or they can come in and pick it up.
That would've been my only question, the people that aren't internet savvy. Exactly.
They can still request it, yeah.
Oh, I have a question, on number, the- Um, I went back to fourteen, that's okay, I'll just ask you off the record, PJ. On number fourteen. You were looking into it, so I'll, I'll just ask you off the record, be a little bit.
Nothing further.
You don't have an added one? Today?
No.
Wow, I think like the second time. Alright, items from the membership, anybody have anything today? Nope, then I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all oppose no? We are adjourned, thank you.